Tonight, Council, thank you for your time and having us to be here. Nice second. We'll start tonight with Councilmember Swanson. He's going to give us an implication, a thought, whatever he so desires, then he's going to lead us in the project.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a short thought from Adelye Stevens. Patriotism is not short, frenzy, outbursts of emotion, but the tranquil and steady dedication of a lifetime. There's much application in today's world. Will stand?
What?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Swanson. Have a chance to review the agenda? Is there anything on there? Do you have a conflict to express? See, so we'll consider that there are no conflicts. Now enter into our active agenda. We'll start with public comments. We have the podium over here. If you'd like to make a comment, please step up to the podium. Say your name if you're resident North Augen. Please leave your comments to no longer than five minutes. And John, if you would watch the votes who may join the sun line.
Andy Cocker in North Augen. I just want to say that I'm opposed to raising the budget for Cherry Days. I volunteered for Cherry Days last year and I thought they did wonderful with the amount of money they had. And this year, they already got more than what they had last year since they've gotten donations already. And I'm sure you all remember how upset the citizens were last year during the truth in taxation meeting. And I don't think spending more money on Cherry Days is going to make any of them happy if it raises their property taxes. Thanks.
Brett Ashdown, I live in North Augen. I'm a member of the Budget Subcommittee to look at the city's budget. I also do not agree with increasing Cherry Days budget past the $50,000 that has been budgeted for.
Anyone else? I thought you didn't like us.
Well, I have, because I've been able to come by so many events, I haven't been able to come and visit, listen to as much as I wanted to.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Well, hang on a minute.
Just glad you're here.
Well, I have a problem.
Okay, say your name for us.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brett Hamblin, 963 Deer Mills Drive here in North Augen. I have a problem with off-leash dogs in our city parks. And it's increasing and some of the stuff that I may bring up may, uh... What? Give at least my interpretation of why I think it's an increasing problem. But the situation happened fairly recently. And I don't want to say exactly when because I don't want to implicate a specific person, but why I'm here now. And it concerns me because in the block that is Parker Park, my golden retriever and I have been attacked four times by off-leash dogs. Four times. Anybody that knows me with a sidearm I carry anymore, that was after the pit bull attack with a family-friendly pit bull off-leash within the park looms. Another part of the problem I see fairly recently, which I don't understand at all, and I wanted to bring this up now also just because there's a couple of things I like. I can't say that I've never seen before, but I've never seen the owner of an off-leash dog in the parks. And I walk my dogs average twice a day. And for seven, eight years, before that, it was between one and two times every day. And it's 100% of the time, it's at Barker Park, about half the time at Wadman Park. And in the, when the weather's nice, so I'm not trying to go through mud to get over to it, the dogs like to go to Oakmont Park also. And again, I've never seen ever a person with their off-leash dogs that had a... Sorry to disparage, but a poop bag in their hand. Not once, ever. The last 14 months, give or take, I started keeping track. So these numbers could be a little low because when I start going back, okay, let's see, I saw this, I saw that, I saw that. 27 times now I'm up to, 27 times between Wadman Park and Parker Park, where people have picked up after their dogs and then thrown the bag on the ground. I don't understand that one at all. But on the sidewalk, by the light post, 27 times. And I don't know where that correlates to, I've never seen anybody with an off-leash dog carry in their thing, but... Over two winters ago, I guess winter, two winters before, I confronted two gentlemen that were walking three dogs at Barker Park. You know, hey, do you guys know Skins Lodge have off-leash dogs at the park? We got into a rather heated discussion. They were telling me where to go and all that kind of stuff. But the one person said, uh... We were, somebody called the police, it could have been you. And they came and just said, put the dog on the leash and left. Didn't take their names, so they have no warning type thing, didn't enforce it, make them leave, anything, just said that. He said, they don't care anymore than that. I like them free, so I'm going to keep walking them, uh, leash free. Two years now, and he's been there almost every day when the weather's nice, summer, spring, fall. Every day, he's got three dogs now, off-leash every time. I saw him within the last two weeks there, off-leash with these dogs. I haven't come before because of what I, in writing some notes, I call it the totality of the law. And I'll be the first to admit, my dogs aren't on leash 100% of the time. When I go take my garbage out, they go with me. Go give the mail, they go with me. My golden's usually with me if I'm out bowling the ball, and he likes to be outside. And he doesn't stay on property as Councilwoman Exum can attest, when he sees them, he runs right over and say hello, being next door. So I kind of hit, I can't complain about people having off-leash dogs if I do it. But I justify in my own mind that the city parks where, I'm at Wadman Park one day, there was a young couple there with their blanket spread out, had some bags, they had gotten fast food from someplace. Somebody let their dog loose, it's running around and runs right up on the blanket with them. That's not right at a city park, in my opinion. What brought me here with this one is just recently, there was a North Augen police officer, I assume that because it's a younger guy, uniform on, white and forest floor with North Augen police on the side of it, at the Bowery, with, I'm assuming, his wife and a child, on a break for lunch, whatever, which none of that bothered me, but with an off-leash dog. And running back and forth between the Bowery and with the little kid at the playground and so forth, they gave him an off-leash dog, so... I'm thinking a lot of this when you see so many people. The majority of the people I see with dogs at any of those parks, if any more, is off-leash.
We're about at our five.
Okay, okay. And I'm thinking if they, when they see people there with off-leash dog, oh, must be okay. And in this case, I don't want to get him in trouble per se, but if somebody sees a police officer there with an off-leash dog, it's all fair game. I think we need to do a little, oh, one quick last little, uh, I have in, I don't know how long North Augen's had animal control people, but in the 14 years I've walked dogs at the parks, and mainly in Barker Park, twice is all I've ever seen animal control at the park. And one of them was when we had the unfortunate suicide situation. I don't know why they went through in the middle of all that jousting was going on, but that's it. Thank you.
Still, thanks for coming. You're always welcome.
So anything bad about, uh...
I just tell you, I have not heard one word from him. I'm probably sure other supervisors haven't given it, so.
This ain't the good guy here, so he's aware of it. All right, anybody online, John?
No, raise hands.
Anybody else this evening who would like to make a comment? All right. Thank you. We'll move on now. Mr. Call is going to discuss with us an action to consider the...
Before we get to number three, I'd like to recommend that we push number three to after number five. It seems premature to talk about inflatable rentals contract before we've established with the budget this for Cherry Days.
Sounds good.
I would move that we move number three to after number five.
Discussion on Councilmember Swanson's motion. It's been seconded by Councilmember Seven. Are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. So we will then move on to item number five, which is now item number three.
No, item four.
Item four, which is now item number three. So we'll go there. So you want to talk about the Cherry Days budget versus the...
Right, Cherry Days, then the 23, 24 budget, then the bounce house.
Okay. So let's start there then. Mr. Call, I guess you're on to talk to us about Cherry Days budget.
Okay, thanks, Council. So I was expecting the Cherry Days Committee to be here.
One of us so far.
Okay. So, I, so the, this is just a, this is a follow-up discussion from last time, Council, where the request came in to increase the spend on Cherry Days as to a total of $117,000. And that was with the increase of $40,000 in revenue that they would be raising from donations. And then up from 25, so from 25 to 7, to 40. And then an increase in city expenditures from 25 to 75 to cover the activities they had. I didn't have a big presentation plan. I just wanted some more time to talk about what was discussed last time, as well as ask any questions of the group, of the, you know, the good volunteers that are helping us this year. But I'm happy to answer any questions, or the Council can talk about questions you have. And I really didn't plan anything for it. It was just a follow-up from last meeting.
So, John, would it be fair to say that what you're asking the Council is to either approve or disapprove the request, which would involve discussion on what an action they'd like to take? Because I think that was where we left it. They had asked for an increase in funding from 25, basically, 75.
Correct.
So is that what you're hoping for from the Council?
Yes, there's some direction so that when we get into the budget discussion, we can talk about how that plays out.
Okay, well, let's address that issue. Councilmember Barker, you're kind of our liaison in that area. Would you like to start and express some thoughts you have for the Council?
Yep. First of all, it's never been my, and I would not propose we raise property taxes to pay for Cherry Days. I don't think that was, that is why I want... I got to discuss with the mayor earlier today. I know we're going to talk about next year's budget, but the committee needs the money now. So if we don't have the money in our budget now that we should give, then I don't know what more we can talk about. And I'm not the opinion I think we do, but I don't know how much. I haven't got a Janie specifically to talk about it.
We have about $6,000 until we're finished here.
We can raise the budget $6,000.
However, all of the expenses that we put towards Cherry Days will be prepaid, so we roll over to next year's.
Okay. But I still don't think we should be raising the money through property taxes. That's my...
Councilmember Barker? Councilmember Exum, would you like to defer?
No, I'm okay. My question was, I, I'm a little bit, I think I was a little confused because after the presentation last week, I was assuming that that was the front of the money, that they were just going to essentially borrow the money upfront. And then when revenues came in, they were going to pay back, at least most of it. And so it was just, we're giving them float, you know, on the time. And so I guess that's, that's what I really want clarification on. So, I mean, we can give them, you know, if we're going in for like seed money for a contribution, I'd say that, that we give them what's in the budget now, but we front them the money they need to get going, you know, assuming that it's successful and we have the, that they get the revenues and donations and things that they are projecting. So is that, is that what you, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I, I didn't understand it that way. I understood that they wanted to keep the money as a seed for future, next year. So it was, it was building a perpetual fund, beginning of a perpetual fund, to fund future Cherry Days.
Which, which I think is great, right? I, I think that's fantastic, in which case maybe we can help them build that on the little other time. You know, not $75,000 for this year, never again. You know, I think maybe $25,000 this year and be scaling it back until it's fully funded. That's kind of my proposal.
It's similar to a discussion that Councilmember Swanson and myself had a little bit different twist. I believe the proposal that was made was that would be kept, which is a little bit difficult, as I was expressing, until they become a 501(c)(3). It's a little bit difficult to start seeding that with city money to make a profit. So, but, did I clarify your questions?
Mostly, how close are they? So are, maybe I'm going to look over to Alan. So are you in the process of forming a 501(c)(3)?
No, in fact, that seeding was honestly something that we thought would be more attractive to you because obviously money's an issue. We think it would be simpler, straight out simpler, to borrow the money, want to pay back, and then next year we did the same thing. We need the track record, you guys have split it, it would be a cost. I mean, we, we wanted to raise this year as a two-day, more than double that you guys have raised in charity donations. I mean, just today, Brian's brought in another $13,000 off. That's on top.
I mean, now...
So the seeding, the seeding is an option. And Melanie would be a great one to ask her about that. But we do like the idea of seeding, but hey, it's easier just to load it like you're saying. We're going to make the money, we're going to have the revenue, we're going to pay back. But there's got to be some faith, and it's got to, yeah, two months here. So we either got to pay off, pay this, and go back to what you guys are used to. Or if you want to branch out and try something, we got to find a way to that, because we've got too many seeds in the, that are waiting for commitments. And right now, it's hard to step, sit on both hands.
Well, just so you know, it's not raised, so the money's in the bank. Because one of those guys had never paid from several years ago. They done committed, but they haven't paid yet, so...
I don't begin from this year too, I don't know who was in charge of that.
That's why I was saying, Councilmember Barker.
Yeah, well, I mean, the fact that it was raised and not collected, I mean, doesn't that kind of, that's not the way we do it. So I know that that's what you're used to, and just because that's the case doesn't mean that's how we're doing it this year. That's unacceptable.
Okay. We're named. Okay, all right, well, that, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with, with fronting the money to, you know, assuming, because it's a very short time. It's a very short window, you know, assuming that they are going to have it collected and we give them the date by, you know, and I would say...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Wonder if they don't raise the money?
What if they don't raise it? That's a little bit, I, I have these guys, I guess, maybe that one. What if they don't? Yeah.
Then we're fired.
Then they're fired.
This is lifelong, remember.
Okay, anyway. Councilmember Dowpass?
Sure. I keep wondering, did we, did we somewhere fail in our communication with the committee? And the only reason I say that is we established the committee, we voted and approved it, but did someone not have that conversation that said, "It will be $25,000 that you will have from the city for all of what you're planning to do"? That's been the thing that's been ringing in my mind this week, is I just feel like maybe somewhere there was a lack of communication or a little bit of a gap or a slip. And, and I wouldn't want to blame it on one individual, and I don't think I can, but it's just, I worry about that. And I think it's completely out of the question in my mind to raise property taxes to be able to support it, even with some of the other potentially creative solutions. Just kind of concerns me. I am okay with slightly increasing the $25,000 in an amount of $6,000 or whatever it is, where we're not doing any property increase, but we found the money in the budget somewhere to do it. I'm okay with a small increase, but overall, just not so much.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Dowpass. I think maybe I can answer that question. I attended the first couple of meetings, and I thought it was very clear that the city had put in $25,000, and the expectation was to raise 25. So I don't think there was, you know, that was never communicated, just so you know.
Okay.
Councilmember Severn?
Well, I've been thinking a lot about this as well. I don't think, I mean, as much as I love Cherry Days, I, I, I'm opposed to the raising property taxes to help the government. Councilman Swanson sent out some options for us to consider where we might be able to pull that money. One was, you know, hoping for an increase in our sales tax projection, right? But that's, that's kind of a guess. Yep, that could go the opposite way. I'm not really in favor of reducing our contributions to the capital projects funds. I think those capital projects need to be... And yes, and I know, I mean, I, I think Alan is, you know, Alan and Melanie and the other members of the committee, I think, are just wonderful. I just get nervous about the same things. We get commitments until we have the money. If we don't have the money, then some of these areas are going to need some deficits. But the only other option was to either do an interdepartmental loan or a pet departmental budget. Quite honestly, I, after looking at all the department budgets, I don't think there's any worth cut. So for me, even though I have fond memories of Cherry Days, I'm okay with the increase of $6,000. But I wonder if it's more of an option of maybe reduce and send it prior.
Thank you for your comments, Councilmember Swanson. You and I have had some conversations about this. Maybe you could...
We have.
Explain.
Recently, as...
Two hours. Maybe some options that will work here?
Council, in the message that I sent out to you, there were, just so that everybody knows what we were kind of tossing back and forth is, we, I first mentioned raise property taxes, and these weren't put in the message in the order that I think that they ought to be done. It was just, okay, these are the options, and this came to my mind, that I stuck them on there. So one option obviously is raising property taxes. I don't think it's clear that everybody is, including myself, is against raising property taxes for Cherry Days. I think that would be a foolhardy thing for us to do. The next option that I mentioned to you is that we could increase our sales tax projection. If you'll recall, over the last couple of weeks, we have reduced our sales tax projection by $150,000 because of what sales tax collection has been the last couple of months. And what the formularies, if you will, that we've been looking at to get some kind of an educated projection for next year's sales tax is indicating that it needed to come down. So I think raising it, in my mind artificially, just to create... Mayor had, I know he laughed a few days ago because I told him we could create the money by raising the sales tax projection and call it the plug money.
Didn't you say something about money depreciation?
No, I did call it that. No, no, I did call it plug money. But I knew, I knew how much he loves that term. And, and obviously, I don't think it's wise for us to do that. I mentioned inter, you know, there's always the opportunity for an interdepartmental loan, as we've learned over the last several years, that we can't just take money from the department and pay it back. There has to be essentially a contract between that department and who the other department receiving it, and some interest paid and those things. I don't think that's a smart thing to do. As JD mentioned, there really aren't, and Blake, there really aren't any cuts that we can make in departments to come up with. And, and again, I don't think it would be wise for us, I think it's a bad message for us to cut what our departments are needing to do in order for us to fund a gathering, right? It is wonderful, as Cherry Days is. So in my mind, we're left with looking at our general fund balance, which right now sits 21%. And pulling, my suggestion would be that we take $25,000 from that, the general fund balance that we have. We're projecting that at the end of this next year, our general fund balance would be 23%. Is that right? It was 23%. Ostensibly, if we took that $25,000 and we added it to the 25 that we already have budgeted, that would give us $50,000 that we could contribute. And with the understanding that the $25,000 would be repaid out of the profits that the Cherry Days, I'm sure, will have, there's, there's no doubt in the abilities of the committee members, right? We just are on a very tight budget, right? With sales tax dropping, a desire not to increase property taxes, increase costs across all departments, upward pressures on wages and those kinds of things, there just isn't that... Anyway, I'm rambling, I don't need to ramble anymore. So that would be my recommendation, that would be the direction that we would consider doing. Does that match what we talked about this afternoon?
Yeah, I could just ask a little bit of, add a little bit of color to that. I do believe it's a good idea to start seeding this thing for long-term. So one of the things I talked to Councilmember Swanson, if the city went, uh... Because I'm pretty conservative, but I started thinking about this. It's a pretty meager contribution to probably the largest gathering in the city. But I'm 100%, I think I've made this very clear. The budget this proposed this year currently doesn't have any property tax increase in it, and I hope that's the direction we can go. But let's say that the city contributes 50, they raise 40. I would say then we split those profits to pay back whatever you, as the Council decides to increase. So it's, it's a payback. So first of all, the money comes there, but if there is any excess over that, it's split on their ability to raise contributions versus the city's contribution. In that regard, just so you know, when I explained this to Councilmember Swanson, even if we take this out as a general fund, that is lesser of a contribution that goes with the general fund to the capital projects fund, because that's how that's funded basically, is out of excess revenues or the expenses in the general fund. So it's, it's the same thing as, in the work page, that is the same thing. You know, the other option is, is, you know, the pressing issue right now is the contract for the part of what we... The thing the city could do is, because they're going to be obligated no matter what they do. Once the city signs that, whether they raise money or not, the cities are obligated, that, that contract. So that could be what the city's willing to do, and anything incremental over that that they raise is what's used to fund Cherry Days. So those are the options that we've talked about there. But if, if there's no faith that they're going to be able to raise money, then this isn't, just to me, isn't worth making any investment in because it's not going to be successful. And why would we put, so we have to have faith in the aspect that they can raise funds to the degree, at least partial to the degree that they have talked about. If you have no faith that they can do that, why would we invest additional money? So those are the options that we... So those are the options that you can look at, but it's just clearly if the money is not paid back, it's a reduction of money that ends up in capital projects. Because that's, that's where the money comes from, with capital projects. But I am not adverse to some type of share arrangement, because I would like the city eventually this be a 501(c)(3), where the city's not funding basically anything long-term, but, you know, to do that, we probably have to live long-term instead of short-term and say, okay. I am a little queasy about that we get a 501(c) established. I am a little bit queasy about profits being made off of the money that's not returned. That's my take. Just, just for your information. So go ahead, Councilmember Swanson. Is that
No.
in our discussion?
It is, absolutely. So now the question is, what do you want to do?
So Claire, let's, let's go back to this, Claire, what are the options? So we talked about taking a small amount of the outer general fund.
Correct.
How much is that? How much is that contract?
Yeah, a thousand, John?
The what?
The best, the current.
Full, full contract as outlined right now, everything, it says thirty-eight or thirty-five, thirty-six, what is it?
So we got a revised amount to have an attendant at every ride and it's forty, almost forty-four thousand.
So essentially, the entire fifty didn't
Melanie.
Throw something because my eyes.
We can absolutely modify that and we can do fewer things, like there, we can adjust if we need to, so.
Here's, here's my take. I explain this, I think this is to Councilmember Swanson. This is a little bit riskier than mine because we're changing the date. You know, so this is an entirely new situation for our citizens, frankly. And our hope is, because this is not a Fourth of July, it somehow turned into that. This was a charity day's celebration from its genesis. So that's, that's the thing I see is, I really like your enthusiasm, but I'm an optimistic dealist. And I think we're, you know, we're changing so many things out of the shoe. What's, we've increased our risk of, I think, of revenues being generated. But I, I, that's one of the things John and myself talked about. I think there was twenty-eight different things, John?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six? You know, do we build ourselves up? You know, do we come back a little bit? Instead of going all in, the risk we've got because of the change, or do we start out all, all in? Because if, if the contract's signed at forty-four, the city's made a forty-four thousand dollar contribution.
You mean twenty-six different new activities?
Twenty-six of the carnival.
And it could, and just, just so you know, even if we do stuff, like when we sign that, he is not, we can shift and modify it if we need to, so.
As long as that says it's right.
I will, I will personally give the owner of the phone and he will. He is already giving us thirty percent off because he's a personal friend. So like, we're getting a lot of vapor, but if we need to back it up just a little bit, we can because of that, I have a hundred percent confidence that with twenty-two thousand residents, you're going to get a good, a large amount that are going to come. I know it'd be gay and everything, but fun is fun. I mean, people show up for fun, so.
The other thing that you want to do too is make sure that there are enough activities so that not the kids aren't waiting on the long line. That's not fun.
They're going to make you in charge of line control.
I'll be in line, in line.
The line is too long, it's Councilmember extra.
So that's, you know, you can modify the, the amount of the contract. I think that's the pressing issue, and then they can put other activities on there based upon what they're able to raise. I mean, there's, those are the options.
So to answer your question, what I'm proposing is that we we take twenty-five thousand dollars of the general fund accounts that we have. It's on that, it's on this big sheet, okay, top of that first column. Expressing the faith that Mayor talked about a few minutes earlier, we have to have, or it's, there's no point in doing it, right? So if we have the faith that, and I do, that they'll be able to raise at least that twenty-five thousand and repay the city, then we take that out of the general fund. It'll get repaid. The contribution to capital projects won't be reduced because it's been repaid. And we've got this thing off and running. And then, you know, the, the share, the profit sharing that Mayor talked about, we can figure out the figures on that, but that would certainly be a part of this. So some of it's going to seed. Does that all make sense? Okay. So that's what I'm, that's what I am proposing.
Thank you.
And just to point out, that twenty-five thousand, even though it comes out of the general fund, that could be a one-time thing because our interest income is substantial. And this is not a tax. This is, interest income has been earned, but I'm saying should not be an ongoing thing. So if you look at that as a one-time contribution to repay, because our interest income is way Am I got you right, Jamie? So those are the options, so let's bring this into a motion of some decisions we can't. You're saying repay the twenty-five thousand? The first twenty-five thousand that we raised? That's already in our budget that we're raising twenty-five thousand? Or the, on top of that? So I think he's talking about on top of that. I don't want to speak for him, but yeah, the original budget was twenty-five from the city, twenty-five contributions.
Yeah.
So I think he was talking.
The repayment would be for the, the additional twenty-five, yeah, not the, not the original.
No, no, so our budget's twenty-five thousand from the city and twenty-five contributions. That's what they have in their budget right now.
Right, and so we would be adding an additional from the city if it increased to fifty.
So there's a contribution and then there's a loan, essentially, right?
Well, it's.
Or lending it, forwarding it.
A repayment.
A repayment, yes.
It's going to be, yeah, you can call it wallop, they can't pay it back. Well, and I'm of the opinion that we don't save any of it for future, since we don't have the 501(c)(3), we just repay it all. That's, and then we'll precedent this going forward, look what we did the first year, and then next year if we get this set up. What we can do is we can reserve that as part of the fund balance, so when the 501(c)(3) is established, that could be seed money.
That sounds like.
I like that. Great idea, Councilman.
All right, it's Councilmember extra.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Councilmember Alvin.
What was the?
I see the committee happy.
Remind you, what was our goal for the general fund balance eventually? We wanted to be what percentage? Because we're at twenty-one percent right now.
Twenty, twenty-one.
Yeah, fifteen was the floor. We used to be twenty-five max, they lost thirty-five, so we were talking in that, ideally twenty to twenty-five.
And so we'd say, we'd stay right in there. So Mayor, I'll move in that we increase the funding, pulling the funds out of the general fund balance, twenty-five thousand dollars, increasing the city budgeted amount to fifty thousand with the repayment language to be worked out with John, between John and committee.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second, Councilmember Swanson's motion.
A second, Pat.
Yeah, a second. Is there any further discussion or questions?
So then, that twenty-five thousand that we already budgeted could, as Councilmember Barker recommended, could go to seed money for next year.
Oh, depends on how much they raise.
Okay.
Right, right now, we're just adding twenty-five to that twenty-five so that they have fifty. And then whatever they raise through contributions and donations and, and vendors and all that kind of stuff.
And we can do that, say we decided to put it into seed money, we can do that with that.
Once they have a 501(c).
Once they have.
But the seed money, in my opinion, should come from the profits over and above after they pay the city back, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was.
That's, that's after we pay the city back, the seed money starts to build. But, you know, it's like I said to Councilmember Swanson, I'm very conservative, but this is probably the number one thing North Augen is known for. By most participation we get from anybody. And it's been twenty-five thousand for how long?
Years.
Never been adjusted.
John, is it thirty or twenty-five?
It's twenty-five. Is that right, Jamie?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it's miniature still.
So we have six thousand, so it's really nineteen thousand you're talking about, right? Because there's six thousand in the charity. For the charity base budget from last year. So you're really talking about nineteen thousand. I just want to get these numbers clear. And I think the committee needs to understand that the city is signing this contract based on their contribution. But they can go out the rest of the event based upon what you can raise in money.
I'm just a little confused. You're saying the budget's twenty-five, we raised twenty-five. That's what it was last year.
We're adding twenty-five to the twenty-five that's already budgeted.
So you're giving us fifty and then we're.
You're raising forty in contributions, plus you're anticipating revenues of X amount. We're saying it's out of most revenues. We've got to pay back the nineteen thousand to the city. So in essence, the city is just fronting you this, and that can be done in a share arrangement with seeding for future or whatever.
So you're fronting us nineteen thousand?
Six from last year's budget. And nineteen additional.
Total of fifty.
I was thinking thirty-one. I thought six, that was like. We just had six.
That's part that you don't have to pay back, the six that was from last year, right? So, yeah.
So there's a budget of twenty-five.
No, I'm, I am confused.
So there's a budget automatically of twenty-five thousand, the check that says.
Already set aside.
Twenty-five thousand from the general fund, but six thousand of that will be taken care of from last year's charity days, so you would only.
The repayment isn't as big as the twenty-five that were, because there was six thousand.
On top of that, the money that we bring in is on top of that also.
You raised forty. I think you raised forty. So I gave you ninety. And then you have revenues projected of X amount. As I recall, the bottom line shows that you were seventy-seven thousand dollars to the good in the same sort of. Right?
Yeah.
So if, if you're saying you were seventy-seven thousand to the good, you only have to take twenty-five percent of that to, to make the city break you down. Anything over and above that can be used for future seed money, but that would come back to the city until you, you put together a 501(c)(3).
That makes sense.
Yeah.
And 501(c)(3) can actually be completed relatively quick. You talk to Bryce Richardson, the challenge Richard, they can. I, I create one and I can always pay for it and have it.
See, right now, all contributions should be coming into the city. So the forty thousand you raised should be coming into the city because that makes it deducted by those who contributed. So the city will know kind of how much money is coming in.
Yeah, they should. I want them to know.
So the thing is, don't over commit what you're, what you're going to raise, or some comfortable thing of what you think you're going to have revenues over the expenses on this thing.
So to answer your question.
But you've got, basically, right now, if you didn't make it die on the advance, you're ninety thousand bucks. If they just raised forty.
We're saying we want to raise twenty-five to forty, but we're at like twenty-three.
I can put forty on the paper, so that's.
Yeah. So we're just, you know, we're cutting it close, though, which is.
I think Ryan was out today raising some money today. But if they can't raise that, then they have to cut that on the the activities. Does it, so he's not getting any more money? No, they can only spend money that they raised, because the city's not giving them any more money.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
A little informal. It's Alan, I believe.
Hi, Tom, yes.
Said that they were not considering a 501(c). Is this group that's doing it going to do it for the next three to five years so that this stays the same and expands? Or is this group doing it for one year, they're not considering your 501(c)? Who's going to do it next year?
The way this is structured, because we're hoping this is an ongoing thing. The whole thing is we're turning this back to the citizens. This was a citizens event to start with. And so we want to be a citizens event going forward. Now, just like with anything that's successful, you have to make an initial investment. So 501(c)(3), I would imagine, if I was these guys, I would wait to see how this first year goes before I jumped in. But I would say if this thing's successful, the ultimate goal is to have a 501(c)(3). How this was structured is we had a chairperson who would serve for one to two years, and we were hoping two, so we get this under. Then there's a vice chair. They would take over during the next two years, and then the third person, so we're on this rotating
Okay, that makes sense. I didn't understand that.
So that we have people that understand what's going on, so they're not starting from scratch, because they're really almost starting from scratch.
Like PTA.
But we.
But I didn't, I didn't understand what was said. I just knew that there's a volunteer committee. And that's all. And so does that mean you're just doing it for a year? And then they're starting over again with all the people next year? Then we're, you know, by setting this up that way, we're demanding whoever does this next year is going to have to do the same level or more. The way you've set up, where they're going to have vice presidents and they're going to move on, that makes much more sense.
I don't think they have that pile of bits. Vice chairperson, so that the, the expectation was is the next person to take over.
So it's not starting with the committee.
So on a 501(c)(3), technically, we have to have like the, I don't know what you call it. Industry director in it, and then you have three people who are all still connected, changed from year to year. Kind of a.
Yeah, I think it can be changed. The trustees change on the trust on 501(c)(3).
You just set up some documents that, that talk about the changeover and it becomes quite mechanical.
So, but then with these guys on this this agreement that we need to talk about today, they don't know how much they don't know how much work can be given them.
Oh, after we vote here, they'll know how much we're giving them.
Okay. Well, the mayor just made it clear, you know, if I were you, I'd wait for, you know, this first year.
Well, to be, so to start a 501(c)(3).
Right, but I tied that into the idea that, you know, we don't know exactly what's going to happen.
Well, let, let me remind you a second. They gave us a pro forma, that's what this council collars, pro forma showings, that they would have excess revenues of seventy-seven thousand dollars over and above what they're going to spend on this thing. Well, that's, they're only getting fifty thousand from the city, whatever they raise. So they, once they hit their nine, if they raise forty thousand and they're at ninety, then they decide what they're going to cut out, what they're, what they're not going to cut out. Now, these are business people here, so I assume what they'd say is, well, we're going to count the things that we're going to generate revenue. Right? Once they hit that. You've got to have faith that we're smart enough to look at it and say, okay, we're at ninety, what are we going to cut out? And hope they look at it and say, well, this is first year by the revenue generator, maybe one of them has received this thing. So, once again, we had Councilmember Barker assigned to kind of help them with this situation. So that's, that's kind of what it is. All right, we have a motion.
Everybody.
Second, do we have any more questions? I think this started, John, did this start with the this wasn't signing the contract, that was, were we on four or five?
Four.
Okay, so four. So we'll start with our voting tonight on anything we vote. So we'll start with our voting tonight on anything we vote on. And I apologize for not saying that start. Ladies first.
Sounds great. I would say yes.
I would say yes. Councilmember Downpens?
It's been five to ten minutes since the motion was made. Can you please remind me of the motion? I'm sorry, I'm not...
We have Councilmember Swanson, he's making the motion.
So we're going to, we'll pull twenty-five thousand, that was the general fund balance that we have. Um, in the excess revenues that they have, they'll pay that back to the tune of nineteen thousand, because there's already six left over from last year. And, uh, and that's what we're doing. And then with the revenue share and all that kind of stuff.
Okay, yes.
Do we have a yes?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Severin?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Just to make sure, John, that when you put that agreement together, it's fully understanding there.
The nice, the nice thing is, to Melanie's point, we'll be handling all the money, so in theory, we don't, we won't write them a check, so. But I think you're right that anything in excess of that, we'll want to make sure we're setting aside for the future. And I think that's the real commitment we need to get right.
So if they hit their revenue goal, they'll end up with fifty-eight thousand in seat money.
Yep.
They'll pay us back the nineteen out of the seventy-seven, and that'll leave them with fifty-eight for next year, which would be...
Like I said, they've only got to perform twenty-five percent of what they said they were. The city to break even, twenty-five percent. Now, success is defined as seventy-seven. But you only have...
No pressure.
So you get nineteen thousand, and the city is where they want to be. Okay? All right, thank you very much for all you're doing, uh, for cherry days. And we look forward to ongoing reports through Councilmember Barker, so we keep him updated. And we'll keep the council updated on that, okay?
Thank you. Any thanks for sponsors would be appreciated also.
Um, I was Dylan today. If you had an excellent idea, give it a favor. And did you get that information?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we are, uh...
He's going to put us to shame.
That's okay.
All right.
They just...
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen.
Hey, Alan.
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 So we were still going to talk about the, the agreement for the bouncing group.
Oh, I'll say.
Okay, so now you want, we're going to slide it number three, right?
Yes.
Okay, uh, can... This doesn't work as good with the, like, I can't see well. Um, so this is the agreement that we talked about um, for the actual carnival's activities, the rides and the bounce houses and slides and things. And because of the way our, our ordinance is set up, anything that isn't put out to a formal bid that's over a certain amount, it has to be approved by the council. Um, and so we'd have to bring it to the council for approval. And the, the thing that Melanie has been instrumental in helping us figure out is in the contract, uh, this is your standard contract that they make everybody sign. And in the paragraph I highlighted very carefully, it says that we will indemnify them for any negligence that we do, and they will indemnify us for any negligence that they do. And Melanie has worked it out to where each of the rides um, will have an attendant on hand who will be regulating who goes in, how many people are on the ride and things. So in theory, the company is providing the entire service. Um, all we're doing is providing them a location, and then people do jump. And so by doing this, this has, has significantly reduced our long-term liability associated with this event. So if someone was to fall and hurt themselves, they have to indemnify us for the damage. Which doesn't mean that we won't be sued. It doesn't mean that our insurance company won't pay. It just means that they will have to compensate, or their insurance company would end up compensating our insurance company for the loss. And so, um, so this is, this is the way it's worked out. It's much better um, than if you were to rent this for your backyard, you most likely would be liable uh, because you would be the one letting kids and teenagers in and out. Um, our insurance does have a policy that allows for inflatables and for mechanical things. Uh, not every city has that policy. Um, it's one of those things that we get as a little extra thing, uh, through Olympus and through their, the underwriter. Um, a good example is the, one of the largest groups, uh, that a lot of municipalities use. They do not use, they do not have the option for inflatables and mechanical equipment. So unfortunately, some cities have found that out the hard way. That being said, uh, Melanie and I have chatted a little bit through email. Uh, I've talked with Becca, the rec person, and, uh, our parks maintenance supervisor, Jamie, about the location. The proposed location is to use the field, the main baseball field. And neither of those two had major concerns with damage or things with, to the one exception that I told Melanie I was going to bring up. Um, there are several of these proposed rides are water-based. And I'm not sure that the field can handle the water and the foot traffic. Um, but then also, I'm, I am worried about the optics from the council of putting water on the grass for twenty hours um, in the middle of the summer. And so that's something the council should talk about. Um, there is another option if the council is okay with the water, but maybe not the location, that we could probably find another location in the field. There may be somewhere nearby that it wouldn't ruin the outfield of the baseball with the traffic. Um, but, so those are just some things that the council would be good to talk about. Um, as Melanie mentioned, we did get a discount. I'll, I'll zoom up to it. I'm not sure if it shows it on the contract, so I'm going to bring up this other document.
On the last line.
Well, it's... So on this one, uh, this is the actual contract you click on. On the quote, it's there, so I'll just bring up that, that's what this other document is, is the quote. So there's a thirty percent discount being given for this event um, based on Melanie's pulling arms and twisting fingers and things to get them to do that. Um, but so you can see that what, what, like, this bid has proposed with all twenty-six elements um, and all those operators, the full, meaning it's something like twen, like thirty operators, because like the zip line has four, not just one. Um, the total would normally be sixty-two thousand five hundred. The discount drops it down to about that forty-four thousand dollar number. Um, if some stuff was eliminated based on what the council just approved, that would just go down. And so one thing that might be good for the council to do is, in approving this, you would, you would authorize, um, you know, meeting the mayor and Jamie to, to spend, or to authorize to sign it up to a certain amount. And I think Melanie could work with the individual, say, would he prefer we sign this and then do revisions? So that he knows that he's committed. Um, or would he prefer that, that we do the revisions and then sign it? And I think that could be up to, I, my guess is he'd prefer we commit so he knows he's bringing people and equipment, maybe not just necessarily which equipment's coming. So, is that, is that clear?
As clear as the screen will take it.
And I, Melanie might have more stuff to add as well, so.
There's a couple things, if it's fair. Um, there might be a couple of things I would maybe want to take off and then actually bring in, like, a, like a big penny due instead, because there's more, more foot traffic that can get in there than... So there's still maybe a few little modifying that we want to do, if, you know. Um, I would really like to talk about the water. Um, it's maybe three or four slides. We could place them strategically so that they're where a lot of foot traffic won't be happening. But there's, there's a few things I would love to chat about and, um, see how we can make that all work. The water, the water slides are so fun, and they cool the kids off. And especially in a hot July day, it's, it's fun, so. And we don't have to run water for twenty hours. There's, there's ways to make it so it's not, you know, we're not just...
Stays wet without having constant running water.
Yeah.
Was that a discussion that needs to take place right now so that we can sign the contract? Or is that something that can be worked out later? As John Penn pointed out, we can just say, yep, we're going to do it, and then Melanie can kind of figure out what's going to work best with Ryan and say, yeah, that's going to make a mess, or...
Yeah, I'd love to have that be an offsite conversation. Let's go to the park, which will...
Right.
Make some, you know, but...
Maybe the way to do that is to say the city's willing to co, uh, sign a contract up to X amount. Let them decide what they want to take out. Like I said, once the city signs that contract, that's a contribution, that's, that's an obligation if the city's in charge, so. I would say that the regiment and council say, okay, here's what we're willing to sign. Uh, in regards to the contract, and let them decide what's coming out. What, you know, you call it, take us a forty-four thousand dollar contract, so. My recommendation would be is you decide what you're willing to obligate the city to have. And let them decide what to take out. Because they've got to decide what's, remember, they got a nineteen thousand dollar obligation sitting on their front step. And so, uh, they ought to look at it and say, well, here's our best chance of making this successful. Because I think we'd all like to see this successful and, you know. That's why we've engaged them, is to make those type decisions.
So here's what I'm, here's what I've gotten from what you're saying. I'm the contracts every day. We sign this contract, we're on what data for forty-four thousand dollars. Where they go back and they begin to rescind, okay, you want to take away this activity, this activity, and this activity. So if we're getting it down to a more manageable thirty thousand dollars, for example. Shouldn't you just be making that decision right now and saying, we only want this to be a thirty thousand dollar contract? So that's what we want to automatically right now take out.
That, yeah, that was fine.
This, this, and this.
Well, no, we're just telling, we're going to sign a thirty-five thousand dollar contract max, and you guys decide whether to take it out. So I think that's the same thing.
That's why I'm just trying to...
So I, I would like to get Melanie's opinion on what is the, you know, obviously, she's going to want as much as she can get to make it successful. But realistically, what is that number that this forty-four thousand would be shaved down to without making the event not as successful as you would have liked? So is that number thirty? Is that number thirty-five? I, we're, I know it's a little bit of a thumb in the air in a way, but I'm just curious what your thoughts are.
So, um, I need to look at this. There, there's, there's a few things that we could probably do without that aren't going to hurt if they're not there. Um, so I'm not... I am not worried, not even the tiniest bit, if we, when we sign this, we can modify this. We, it is, we, this guy is a good friend. And we're going to give him a deposit. And we can edit, we can modify. But I know I can take a few things out. I just need to sit and look at it, and I need a little bit of time, but um, if you want to say forty thousand, sign it, great, I'll take four thousand out, and I can shift and change. But I mean, I, I'm not really sure. And we can sign this in two weeks if we want, but I need to just get him at least a deposit, is what I need to do.
Gotcha. But we could, oh, sorry, interrupting you.
No, that's okay, uh. I don't think there's a lot more, like, I would be ready to make a motion for an amount that I have in my head, so.
Okay.
What about an up two?
That's, that, my motion was going to be an up two.
Well, and we've already committed the, like, fifty thousand to them, in which case, if they want to put the fifty thousand mostly here, I mean, that's their money maker, right? So if that's where they want to put it, then, you know, they've got, then they've got the other, you know, six thousand dollars that wherever else they want to seed. You know, to me, it's kind of up to that, committed for that, that fifty thousand, so that's, you know. What do you think?
Uh, I have a motion. That's ready.
Okay.
So I move that we approve, uh, a contract or an agreement of bouncing bins, inflatable rentals, not to exceed thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. So thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars is the max that could be expended.
You have a second to that motion? No second to the motion, is there a second to the motion? I'll ask one more time. I see no second to the motion, so the motion dies for lack of a second. I just throw out here, I think one of the things that the citizens are really counting on big time is fireworks. And I think that if, uh, for some reason, they couldn't raise the money, we didn't have fireworks, I mean, just think about the messages we got, and it can blow off.
For valid reasons.
If they ran out of money, didn't have fireworks, yeah. I'd probably call more names than I did last year. You know, couldn't control the ten thousand dollars. So, uh, that, uh, I think fireworks are going to be a good camp. So we're at least covered that for sure. So does somebody have another motion they'd like to make, uh, to resolve this situation, you know?
I agree with what Councilmember Nester said. We just said we're going to give fifty thousand dollars to the committee. They're asking for forty-four here. If we... Why do we get a thing that just had a penny of money? I mean, so my motion would be that to true the contract up to forty-four thousand dollars with the inflatables, and let them decide if they want to eat it all on this.
Can I tell you why the council needs to be involved in this, Inspector Higgin? Because we're the ones that are going to take the heat on this, right? And if this is not a rounded event, this is going to take the heat on this.
You really, man.
Yeah, but at least I'll have the defense of my position. So I, I do think, you know, there needs to be some oversight to make sure that this, you know, there's two things that the, that the city's counting on. Pray and fireworks. Everything else, if it didn't happen, I think the citizens would be just, is fine. Is fine. And like I said, I've been around a lot of them, but I really appreciate the efforts, Councilmember Barker. But a lot of money is in the bank. Because the answer was, well, we're going to take this to the higher-ups, right? That means I've got a potential out. So until that money comes in, I wouldn't count on it. But appreciate the efforts. Okay, so...
Did you make a motion?
We have another motion.
I did, that's it.
A second.
Okay, what's the motion again?
Up to forty-four thousand dollars.
Okay, you have a motion to sign a contract on behalf of the city up to forty-four thousand dollars.
A second.
And second, by Councilmember Swanson.
Is there any further discussion on that issue?
I, I just want to express that I, I'm expressing my faith in their ability to get this done in the committee that we put together. And we put it together and approved it based on what we know of the individuals and their ability to get things done. So it's, it's on that that I'm willing to paint the target on my chest and allow those to start throwing.
Okay, so is there any further discussion on that issue? All right, we have a motion to allow the city, uh, John, myself, uh, to sign a contract, specifically referenced here, up to forty-four thousand dollars. So any further discussion? All right, this is regarding Agreement A oh-six dash twenty twenty-three. This is a roll call vote. We'll follow our agreed upon... Ladies first?
Sounds good. Does the motion need to include the agreement number?
Yes.
My motion...
Or his motion.
My motion is for Agreement A oh-six dash twenty twenty-three. Up to forty-four thousand dollars.
Authorizing, uh...
Yeah, yeah, authorizing the major John call. Whoever else wants to put their name on it.
Probably. Anyway, okay, so we have a motion.
Second agreement.
Yes.
Yes? Yes, Councilmember doubt this.
No.
Councilmember Swanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Severin.
Yes.
Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes on a four to one vote.
Mayor?
Yes, I just want to express, I, I'm very confident in the committee, but it was just an effort to try to limit the liability, liability to the city with that number I threw out.
And I would hope, I appreciate Councilmember Swanson's comments also and yours, but I would hope that the technics, that he understands, we would hope that. I imagine we're coming over. Okay, we're now back to, let's see, where are we? We're number five. We're going to have a discussion on fiscal year 2023 and 2024 budget. The presenter on this is Jamie Jones, our finance director. I do have a couple of comments if I may. Council, that'll be okay. Since the mayor, that's the budget, is that okay? This obviously is a major activity in our city. Takes a substantial amount of time and that's what we've been elected for, is to be physically responsible for money that's basically collected one way or the other for our citizens. So I appreciate, first of all, the substantial time put in by Mr. Call and Jamie. This has been a interesting thing. I think we've learned more, we're perfecting this more each year. It's not perfect yet. I think some of you have attended some of the citizens' budget committee review. Still anxious to see what recommendations they may have. I have attended some of those meetings, I think I just won, but I've attended most of those. And I appreciate their efforts. Appreciate your efforts as council members. Had the opportunity to have discussion with numerous of the council members regarding their responsibilities and appreciative of Councilmember Swanson as finance lays on heading this up. So as I looked at this budget, it was based upon the fact that service levels are maintained at the current level. That doesn't mean that the budget committee may come back and say, you know, we're willing to ask you to consider, you know, a reduction or an increase in services to the citizens, but this budget is based upon maintaining current levels of service. Feel free, Jamie, to correct and remedy anything that's wrong there. I think the budget, I would say, was prepared as a vehicle to plan for the future of North Ogden. Well, I understand that we are facing certain financial constraints. But I really think that you as a council need to look as much as you can at the future to make sure we're prepared for what's happened. And I'm no way critical, but I think we found ourselves behind eight all of some instances. And I've always been a proponent that the infrastructure comes first and then growth follows. Because once growth outpaces, infrastructure is very hard to keep up. So as I looked at this budget, the questions I've asked of Jamie and John, I would call it kind of a hybrid process. I think the primary drivers of our budget are pretty static. You know, we have basic services we provide. I think our revenues, you know, other than sales tax have been fairly static. I've always believed that, you know, expenses are paid out of revenues. You can't look at the expenses and then adjust the revenues accordingly. That, you know, we have constraints and that's based upon the revenues that were. So part of the things I think in this process is last year's speakers were looked at because we, we are somewhat static in our approach. And I think we were careful not to perpetuate inefficiencies. If we saw any efficiencies in the prior year's numbers, I think with the help of the budget committee, those were considered while also considering we're probably in a unique situation that we haven't been in for many, many years, which is a highly inflationary situation. And frankly, we're no different than other entities out there in the world that are facing very inflationary costs, particularly in employee compensation and benefits. And I hope that our citizens, and I know you as a council, are very appreciative of what workers here are doing. I mean, it's, it's not easy. I was a little bit dismayed. Our public works is up clearing situation above 1,700. And it's sad that we have citizens who feel like they need to record every action that those folks are doing in hopes that some accountability and it's not easy to do your job under a microscope. We're all pretty aware of the fact that our police officers face this last week. So I think that even though we have inflationary pressures, it's our responsibility as a council to make sure we're retaining our folks and that we're treating them fairly. So my focus basically, and I think the focus of Jamie and John was on providing services, essential services, and make sure these are provided in an efficient and effective manner. We have that obligation. So last but not least, I think the budget was evaluated from the value proposition standpoint. Is the money we're spending, is that returning value to the citizens to which we serve? So, you know, it was kind of a three-pronged approach here. And I call that hybrid. And as you know, we have an obligation to present a balanced budget, which I think you'll see is the case with much work on John and Jamie's place they've done that. I think as we go through the budget tonight, maybe with a question in our mind, does the money we're spending, does that create a good cost benefit? So I didn't feel that the city was at this point in time ready to employ a zero-based budget concept. That was shortly in the back of people's mind, but I just don't think the city's ready for it. So several things I want to address that may be of interest to you. These were questions that were asked by various council members regarding open positions for which there's no budget. I think the only one that I'm aware of really is the Parks and Recreation Department head. There was not money put in the budget to rehire that position. I think we're still in that experimental stage there with the reorganization. There seems to be working fine, but I don't think we closed the door on that. So we'll see what's going on more. When we first started in the budget, things have changed a bit with our planning department. There is a position in there for Scott to hire and make sure that he doesn't become a one-man band, which is what he is right now, and we surely don't think that's fair. So there is a position in there to hire for Scott. Chief Quiney did request a 23rd officer this year, which is not in the budget. This year was, I think, highly unusual with the increase in the budget, money being beyond Chief Quiney's control. But the budget was up substantially. So that has not been included in the budget. Officer. I could say a lot of those things, so one time expenditures this year will be beyond Chief Quiney's control. And so I would talk with Councilmember Swanson about this. I think we do need a strategy to prepare for that 23rd officer. We put it off now a couple of years and the city's continuing to grow. And the chief has given us some statistics in his report showing that calls continue to increase. My recommendation would be is any property tax money that is, well, I didn't know all property taxes goes to public safety, but that is identified specifically as an ongoing revenue source to fund that 23rd officer. You know, we talked about sales tax, you know, a certain threshold we do have. But I think that basically, as we, we see the growth in property taxes and growth in the city, that money is, so if excess revenues or expenditures are 350,000, that grows to 350 now. So then we have a way to fund that officer and future offices in the city. I think all of the requests from the chief for small equipment and things, radios, vests, et cetera, were included. There is one item, I think, that probably warrants further discussion. I think the chief has brought this up and that's the second drone. It's in the budget, but the chief has said that it feels like contributions can fund that. Well, that's, that's our hope there. I think in regards to personnel realignments, we had a close meeting discussion on that. And John will continue to work towards that. Sales tax has been kind of a difficult thing. I've already been concerned in the past that we maybe missed that projection a little bit. But I think with what we've seen in the last three months, actually, that projection has been reduced, as Phil mentioned, by $150,000. I'm one that always likes the surprise on the upside instead of the downside. So that's been estimated on current trends and other methodologies Jamie's trying to utilize, but it's kind of thrown us a curve in the last couple of months with what's happening. As I mentioned before, the current budget is based upon no increase in profit taxes. That's your call, but the budget has been prepared in that manner. I understand that decision is fluid based upon what's happening in the city. I think it's important that we do have a rainy day fund. I think as we saw this year with snowplow, we blew past that budget, I think, pretty easily. FEMA doesn't come through, we're probably facing what John, $250,000 expense over at 1,700.
I'm not sure I saw the estimate yet, but I wouldn't be shocked if it's in that range.
And things are gonna start. Well, I think it's wise for you to have a rainy day fund, not only for those type of things, but I think also to be able to build the capital projects fund, knowing that we have commitments and things that need to be done in the city going forward. There has been discussion about the council determining a cap on future increases in property taxes. You might want to consider that. There's been several things thrown out in regards to what that cap may be. Frankly, I think it's gonna be an interesting year this year because I think there's a lot of our citizens who feel the profit taxes going down because valuations of homes are not accelerated, in some cases gone down, but that's just not how it works. The city, county sets our tax rate at the same dollars of growth. So I think all large equipment purchases, as requested by departments, are in the budget. I think that we've learned kicking actual leads down the road ends up costing us more. As difficult as it is, I think we have to give our people what they need to get their job done. You know, we've got a lot of equipment that's now approaching 15, 20 years old that's about worn out. I have a first to learn things out, and I have a first to learn them out to the point that it costs us more to maintain them. It does to have good equipment. So all large purchases, I think, are in there. The, I think, we approved the grant money and matches, that's all in there. And I think all capital projects, as previously discussed, by the council are in the budget. I think Jamie has put together kind of a five-year projection because I think we need to be looking forward to make sure we have the revenues to accomplish those things that are essential. So anyway, that's kind of the philosophy from my standpoint as I tried to stay out of the way, not get ran over as I did the budget. But I think that kind of summarizes at least my take on, on the budget and where we're at. I think Jamie has, even from the last version, maybe a little change in the budget that has come up. I would point out, as I mentioned to you in an email or text earlier, one of the things that's in this budget is $80,000 impact for public safety. It would be used to reduce the amount coming out of the general fund for payment of the debt. That is purely an estimate. I'm not sure we've got the impact study back yet, John.
We've got the, the draft version, but the council still has to approve it before it can be implemented.
Yeah, so that is not gonna prove that it's, it's purely an estimate. And we know that housing has slowed down. So that, that is part of the balancing act of the budget. If that doesn't come in, then we'll be dipping into fund balance. I, I think that, you know, the, like I said, the capital projects, including parks, the equipment in our parks, where it can be used and some of the things that we feel our citizens have desired are in the budget. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions. Once again, I, I can't express my appreciation enough to staff, not just Jamie and John, but Chief and Dave and everybody, staff. Everybody has really done this, I think, under the assumption that we are a conservative city, but we don't want to be so conservative that we find ourselves being done. That makes sense. So with that, Jamie, did I misrepresent anything? Is that pretty dang close to what our discussions have been?
Pretty much, yeah.
All right, moving away. Bill?
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
You highlighted the highlights.
You mentioned you had some changes from the last version that you emailed out to us.
Yeah, so I do, I have, I have a few changes. We talked about the sales tax dropping that. About 150,000 or at 150,000. And then how we balance the budget is there's positions there that we did not backfill. There's two positions there that are within the general fund. We also increased the grant monies for the public safety body cameras. That was not initially in there. And then we've also increased the class, the use of classy road fund balance of 75,000 in anticipation of next year's snowplowing season. So that's how we came to a balanced budget. And I know it's a little bit over for that. Again, I'd like to watch. Shows there 11,000, almost 12,000 now. But, you know, that's, I'm sure between now and probably when we got the budget, we can, we can probably find a place for that, otherwise. And let's see, what else? Other changes, so we did increase some of the admin transfers. We're just trying to do a lot of cleanup there. That's why legislative went down. More refining costs. The finance department did add a part-time position for the department. Administration did increase their staff by one full-time equivalent. However, half of that is solely allocated to the utility funds and their administrative needs. Non-departmental, we're adding some more cybersecurity software to help regulate remote computers and Wi-Fi connections and those things. And then we did increase general, general government buildings, their utility costs. Oh, my gosh, that, I can't believe how much utility costs have gone up, I think, like doubled. I can't believe how much utility costs have gone up. I think like doubled. And then we also tried to increase that admin transfer to the utility funds to to help offset that. We did remove the second drone that was covered in the the second drone. It was in the original budget, but we didn't remove that in anticipation of that. So. And then increasing the crossing guard cost there from 31,000 to about 38,000. I think that we added a, didn't we add a crossing section last year?
Well, we added one, but we also lost one.
Okay.
We lost the one with the desire of that word.
We did, as Mayor mentioned, we restored the full-time planner position 100% for the year. And then we removed that halftime FTE position that was shared between planning and building. And then what else do we do?
So Jamie, what was the cost of that drone? 6,000, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was about 68. It was about 68 by the time we got down with that software.
Hardware and software.
I have a lot of faith that the chief will do that, but you know, in light of the fact that we're willing to support the council, that we will increase the spending of cherry days, I would say we put that back in the budget for consideration with the hopes that the chief will raise that money.
Chief, don't you have about half of the already arranged? We're at 3,500 of 68.
Well, see, I knew we'd find a way to spend that 1,000.
Well, you know, we have 6,000, we have open cherry days, 6 hours per drone.
Just to speak on how important the drone is, last time we had that incident, Hoover County chose to say three drones to try flying the whole time. And then, yes. For, this is my own side that's doing the investigation on the fire, where we can't go in the building, actually flew a drone through the building so we could see it all, but without having to walk in it. I mean, and I'm always seeing a small portion on the fire side of how important we are. We're kind of all kind of going that route where either really a benefit and they do help. And then to see what they can do on a fire, now to see what they can do with the police force, it might be well worth it.
So you think the fire district could come up with the 3,300 in need? Is that what you're saying?
So we don't really need to increase budget by 3,500.
Yes, if he has the money in the bank.
It's in the bank, isn't it?
Yes, it is. All right, because that's really a contribution once the money's in the bank.
Okay. Last one, at least we increased funds for recreation. We added back the summer camp expenses of like $600. That's really much it for the general fund.
Okay, council, do you have any questions for Jamie on the general fund? You've had a chance to look through this budget. Jamie, is there anything from your perspective as our finance officer that concerns you in this budget? Knowing that you're fully protected and have immunity.
Wow. Pretty good.
Doesn't mean it can't be brought back in the future to haunt.
I mean, because you're the one that probably knows this budget better than anybody. So anything you have that this council should be discussing that you have concerns with?
You know, I I I'm really appreciative appreciative of all the department heads. I think everybody did a really great job of really combing through their budgets. We've had a lot of turnover in personnel and so some new eyes were on these budget numbers and items that were needed. So I think that everybody's done a really good job of sifting through that and and also the help of the so, yeah, thank you. The citizens budget committee, I think, has also helped there too. So I I feel really confident as far as expenses in the budget. Obviously, you know, those revenues always just caught me, right?
It's why you're in the general fund balance. That was gonna ask you.
Jamie, you and I talked earlier today about some of the concerns you have with depreciation.
Well, yeah, so I was gonna get to that when we when we talked about the utility fund. Yeah, I got more to say. That was just general fund.
Just wanna make sure we had that conversation.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot with this. I think you know this. So what, you know, you think out the grants, I mean, the netting. What do you think the increase in expenses are? Through, you know, including the public safety building and those type of things. What what do you think our expenses are going up in the city?
Um, oh, well. Expenses are going up in the city from last year to this year. I mean, obviously, our last year, our budget was 10 million eight. We moved it to just over 11 million and now it's it's right at 10 million seven is, or I should say 10 million eight, let's round, right? So we're kind of coming in at the same as last year. So it's just kind of like, it's 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 a shifting game, right? So we shifted revenues down. Expenses have gone down, but it's because we've lost we've lost positions that we're not backfilling, but then also like in the police department, they needed some some extra equipment this year. So so to say what has gone up or down.
Well, just overall.
Overall, I would say, yes, expenses have gone up.
Including a $50,000 bill for an election this year.
Right? So expenses have gone up because there's a three and a half percent salary increase, right? And then a 6% benefit cost.
But that's been offset.
But it's been offset. So.
And I'd assume we backfill those positions if we felt we were putting our employees at risk or the city services.
I would say based on revenues. Based on based on revenues and how the council felt.
Any questions for Jamie?
That's a little question.
Anything else?
Yes.
Mr. Call. See if he has any concerns.
Concerns? So I feel like the city can operate on the budget that's being proposed. Some areas that we will keep a close eye on is some of those departments where we've lost folks. You know, a good example is like the halftime person in in planning that is not technically being backfilled. Is there, we need to, we need to watch, Scott and I have had the conversation about watching the triggers for when we need that person. And so if if we get things coming in favorable revenue-wise, then I think, you know, we'll be talking police, we'll be talking planning. Those type of things where the service right now, we're doing okay, but if it comes back like it was two or three years ago, then that's departments to be underwater again. And so we just, that, so it's not a, it's not a concern today. It's a we're gonna keep our our thumb to the wind and make sure that we're we got an eye on what's coming. So the council isn't behind, like you mentioned earlier, Mayor.
If I heard you correctly, though, that would be based upon revenues to pay for it, right? I mean, it's not exactly timing, but
Right.
we'd be anticipating the revenues there for instance, in time.
Right, correct.
Jamie's really anxious to get on the enterprise front, but I can see. She's just. Anything else, Jamie?
Uh, no, general fund.
The only question that I have, and I think John just answered it, is, you know, are we are we confident that none of the positions that are not being backed there are, it's okay not to backfill? That level of confidence? And are we keeping our fingers on those pulses? So that we know when, if and when the time comes that we do need somebody there? It sounds like John already answered that question. So that was the one. That was the only question I had there.
All right, anybody else before Jamie goes on the enterprise front? Jamie, oh.
Can you, you or Jamie, explain the police impact fee again? I just wanna.
Yeah, thank you.
Unless that's not the right section, I just want to understand that better. Seems like it seems like it's preparing for that. So we're saying that that money adds towards the eventual 23rd officer.
And that covers the help. In essence, it frees up more money, but it's basically an impact fee to help pay for the building here. Which is frees up money for use in other general fund situations because historically, we budgeted that full principal and interest payments on that. This would supplement that. We never anticipated doing that. We, you know, we had money in the budget to pay the whole principal and interest without this, but this is something subsequently that has come about. And basically, it's it's similar to, John, correct me if I'm wrong here, an impact fee like we charge when somebody builds a home, they are impacting the use of our parks, right? They're impacting the use of our roads. And we're saying, look, part of the reason we're building this building is because we anticipate the growth in our police force and in the city. So new residents who are coming in and building a home, it's an impact to help cover the issues there the growth is causing in the city.
Okay.
So similar to a park impact fee, sewer impact fee, all those things.
And and since we've never done this, there's a little bit of fuzziness on what that number will end up being this year, right? We're guestimating that number, right? Because.
So on on all of our impact fees, we make a best guess on how many houses will be built, how many apartments, and how much commercials worth fee. And so we've got the initial number per house that the council hasn't approved yet. And then we're timesing that by the number of homes and so that's why it's still an estimate.
Thank you. Okay, that answers that question. Yes, thanks for asking that question. Anything else? All right, Ms. Jamie? Want to proceed along?
Yes. I went up to the water utility fund.
We are still waiting for recommendations from the citizens budget committee.
Yes.
Will be taken into consideration for the budget.
Yeah, so so the budget is adopted in June. We have to adopt a tentative next week. So, yeah. I don't know when that will be, but yeah.
I think there's a meeting tomorrow, but we're probably gonna miss that. It'll be out at 2:40.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that will be. Well, then I'm here. Spring tree.
All right, Jamie, we're on page 43 here.
Awesome. All right, so our revenues have increased $43,000 in anticipation of a utility rate fee. When we first talked about it, we were looking at $2.15, but now we're looking at $2.60. And most of that is due to some employee increase and also the admin. Sorry, excuse me, the admin offset fee transferred from the general fund. And they, in the utility funds, it's that that halftime administrative support staff that is added for the utility funds. The caveat on that one is that it's under administrative services, so it'll be housed over at the utility office. But really, it'll be under administration for rights. And so that's why it's part of the admin transfer fee because it's in the general fund, but it's part of that admin offset fee to charge the utility funds for those. There's mine.
I was just looking, what was the people's expense here? Because I know we've been pumping a lot of water. Now we might have to pump in a different direction, but we've been pumping enough now. He said that he showed us a very genetic. Where would they find that? I just want to make sure the.
For the utility, okay, so for the buildings, it's part of the admin transfer. It's is right at the bottom.
Pumping water.
Oh, so it's number 290. 5140. And we thought with the amount of water that are coming in, we won't be pumping as much this year as we did last year.
Even with the increase in costs.
Even with the increase in costs. So that is the change there. Is the 45 cents there to at the utility rate for water.
How much would rate increase place in 260?
So it was initially 215 and then it went to 260. Yeah.
45 cents.
45 cent increase from the last time we talked. And, yes.
Would just be the appropriate time to inform the council of the fact that that just covers operating
Yes.
costs and there is an ultimate based upon the projects for the next five years. We would have a deficit in the water fund. Is that my recollection?
So.
If you don't do anything.
Yeah, if we don't do anything, obviously, operation costs keep going up. That would start me, that will start eating into fund balance, right? And we have we're trying, we've we've built this a five-year plan so far. It's not complete. I'm not where I want to be on it. But as we look at it and start plugging in, what we do have for fund balances, I think we're in like year three and we're like in the negative. And for all of the water line replacements and other other needs in the water fund. This $2.60 covers the increases to the operation funds for this year. And a lot of that is due to just right, costs go up and we haven't increased the the utility rates since I believe 2019. I think it was 2019 that we we raised it a dollar. To 1702.
No, it took an increase just mid-year this year.
Well, that we did, but that was for power for pumping.
Yeah, but so we have increased the.
Not the base rate. That was just to those individuals that are in those tiers.
So we did increase revenues with an increase in those tiers, right?
Yes, in those tiers. She was speaking of base rate last night in 2018.
And, so, yeah, so part of the depreciation discussion that Phil was was alluding to was um. So in the water fund and in the sewer fund right now, we are replacing lines like in the water fund and most of those some of those could be in cap in construction in progress and not being capitalized as far as depreciation. So they're not being included in depreciation. But the other flip side of that, the other flip side of that is once we depreciate those lines, we have to make sure that there's not two lines that are in the depreciation schedule. So 50 years ago, when we added a line, we put in a water line, it's on our depreciation schedule, and now we're replacing it. We need to make sure that the line that we are replacing has been fully expensed, so there's not two of the same water lines in the depreciation schedule, so we're not double dipping that depreciation. So there could be some water lines that are being replaced that could be newer than 50 years old. I don't know that answer, and that's that's the fact-finding mission that we get to go do. Is just to make sure that there's not the two lines in in depreciation.
Are they identified kind of line by line?
That is the question. So it's going to be a very an educated guess to make sure that 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 we got it right. The same thing is happening in the sewer fund with our sewer lining. We're seven years into replacing the sewer, the re-lining our sewer lines. Currently, right now, there's four years that is that is on the depreciation schedule and three years that is sitting in construction in progress. So it's not being accounted for in depreciation. And that's been since 2020, 2019, so 2020. Um. Same thing there, we need to move those lines into capital, make sure that we're we're accounting for the depreciation, which we have in this year's budget. That's why it's, it went up $80,000. And then with the same thing, we also need to make sure that there's not two sewer lines in the depreciation schedule. Especially the lines, so we have about another seven. Especially the lines, so we have about another seven years, um, of lining projects left. And, um, I would imagine somewhere along, somewhere along the line. There might be two, that's what, that's what I'm afraid of is that there's going to be two. Of the same lines that have been that scheduled. And so I just want to make sure that it's all cleaned up. I want to make sure we're doing our due diligence and that we get it right before we. Make this grandiose plan. And our numbers are, are not far wrong or off in some way. I think it's a big impact. I, so I want to make sure that they are true.
So I have a question about that. Are we depreciating? Are we taking too long to depreciate that? Because that sounds like we're coming to end of life possibly before they fully depreciate it. So that sounds like our depreciation schedule is true.
So the, uh, the lines in there, I believe right now are in there for fifty years. And so what we're relining right now has another fifty-year life, and so that's why we need to make sure that there's not the two lines in there because you're right, there could be one that's been. Thirty-four years old, I don't know. And then now that we've relined it, and so there's all that depreciation, then we gotta make sure that we take that out.
Okay. Okay. That sounds like a really fun job.
It's really hard too when we do little sections of water. Two years ago.
Is it matching up? Are we here? Which one is this one?
You have two different issues here, don't you? One is with the re-line, we're extending the life of the existing pipe.
Right.
So we wouldn't write that off with the replacement of the lines. We end up writing that off if there's a balance left on the books, but. Councilmember extra, this brought up an excellent, excellent point here. Because if we're replacing those lines before fifty years and we're saying that's their life and it only has a thirty-year life, that's what you have to do. You have to start depreciating that going forward, thirty years to fifty years. And that could have a dramatic effect. Even though it's a non-cash expense.
Right.
Right? So it doesn't hurt the cash balance, but it, uh. Surely could have an effect on. On the, uh, operating costs and the revenue charge.
That's why I want to get it right, make sure that. Before it's.
We have a separate issue on this that I wanted to make sure the council did on the water fund. Is the council has to make the decision how they're going to provide. Outside of impact fees. On these projects that are listed on your sheet that you. On here. Pumps on the walls. Because there's four things here that would show this unfunded. That is the, that is the Brulam Drive booster station for a million dollars. That's the equipment at the candy well for hundred fifty, that's the equipment at the ten fifty well. Of sixty, that adds up to two point one million dollars. But, uh, has to be available for most projects that need to be put online.
We talked about this a little earlier back and forth.
That's over and above everything else that's funded.
Right, and as I, as I see the water fund, everything that. Is I, I make sure I understand this. We're starting a water fund of four point nine. Million. We have, we're estimating eight hundred thousand in income. Then we have the five projects. That are funded and that would leave us with a fund balance of two point nine million.
I guess where is the water tank in there?
That's the three point eight, the two million gallon.
That's the top one.
First one underwater from projects. And that's funded through ARPA, impact fees and seven sixty-four from. So as I, it is. In, in my non-accounting brain. I don't know how you guys do it. Honestly. We have two point nine in, in. That we would have a balance of two point nine in the water fund. With two point one in projects that would need funding. So we could fund those and still have eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, that, that's not my understanding, but Jamie could correct me on that. Looks like we have seven point nine million dollars projects. Right? How much money do we have?
So we have four point nine plus the two five in, in ARPA and impact fee.
So that's supposed to be seven nine, isn't it?
Well, the five, the, the four point nine plus the eight. So you're.
I'm lost on the eight.
So we're talking cash, right? So the eight's depreciation capture.
But we're almost spending that each year just on innovations.
Right?
Through lines and stuff like that. So the, I always thought these were over and above. Or more. Line replacements, except these are major, major projects. Spending almost our entire amount of depreciation each year.
Yeah, so this is cash.
So is he correct? Because we talked about the need to be underfunded on these.
Yeah, if we were to fund all of the projects eventually, yeah, but so, so the three projects on here are like the major ones that are needed to happen in the water fund. They're not all of the ones that are listed in the water fund.
Yeah, see, that's where I think you and I are differing. I went through this with Jamie on a five-year projection.
And these, these projects.
That's on the base rate, that's why we have to talk about.
Yes.
A base rate increase of more than two sixty so that we are. Continuing to build, going down the road, yes.
That was my understanding, Jamie, is we worked out five years, all the projects that have been identified.
Right.
We were short cash.
But we're also trying to include depreciation in there as well to make sure that we're capturing all of that. And then trying to stick with the eighty-twenty rule. And so that, so that the formula gets bigger and bigger. And so for right now. So this is just a, this spreadsheet was just a capture rule we're sitting at right now.
Right now, not.
So I'm trying not to bring in the other conversation to convolute, like to make it more complicated.
Sure, though, that this two sixty increase may not be.
Right.
But we, can I ask a question? Just like, but we would have enough money. Uh, into the projected ending fund balance to cover those three projects.
As it sits, right?
As it sits, right, as it sits right now.
But going five years down the road, we are not bringing enough in, in our base rate. To build the reserve, to continue to build the reserve for future projects down the road.
Right, but this two point one is part of that five-year. They are. But not all of it.
Yeah, I mean, it's clear, I guess, there's things that they've identified that are gonna have to happen in the next five years with growth in the city. That are gonna have to be funded. And my understanding was based upon that we're short cash. And so if we, if we utilize the two point nine to cover those three waterfront projects, we don't have the money that's coming back in.
But I have to.
Identified. Okay. Okay, sorry, just wanted to be aware of that. Any questions on water? Any questions on water? So how do we do that then?
All right, so in the sewer fund.
This is a. This is project. And this is just covering. What else could move you up for?
Oh, good. All right, so since, uh, in the, in the sewer fund, since we last talked, we, we were looking at this utility rate of being at two dollars and fifty-seven cents. But now it is at two eighty-five per month. Um, just a reminder that the dollar twenty-two is the pass-through fee for Central Weaver Sewer Improvement District. And then the operation costs increase of a dollar sixty-three. Um. The costs increased are due to the utility costs that we talked about from, from the admin transfer. Um, we did reduce some motor pool allocation, um, to some refining there and then that also includes that hard-time. Administration staff that we talked about that's coming over from. Bryce's team.
Increases per household come month. Yeah, yes.
But conversely, if, if you look at that, I hope you looked at it this way, what was increasing? For instance, in our twenty-two, twenty-three budget, for instance, motor pool is fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars, even though it went down from. Forty-seven to thirty-two, it's doubled. So when you, you go down there and you, you look at the things that have gone up, this is an actual expenditures. It's based upon what we budgeted, but you could see as Jamie mentioned, we got a hundred thousand dollar increase from Central Weaver Sewer District. See, that's not, that's just a pass-through. They sent us a bill, we, we pay. So if you go down and you can see that. Purchase of equipment. But. Most of it's just a pass-through from, uh. Proper allocation of our motor pool and. That's the sewer.
Um, as far as capital projects, um. I don't know that we'll be doing the sewer lining, um, for just two hundred thousand. Um. Uh, that was a question that I had for Dave and I, and we need to refine that a little bit more because just because those costs obviously have gone up, gone up. And but we do have, um, part of the project there on twenty-seven fifty north on the trailhead. Uh, we'll pass some sewer expenses there for the restoration and things that they're doing up there. Except for the sewer fund.
It comes out of sewer.
There will be a little bit of the conserva sewer fund, um, because it'll be a sewer ladder rights of the sewer fund that own it. Questions on sewer fund? Um, stormwater, so there is not, uh. A water rate increase there. Um, and then again, those pesky utility costs increase. Um, as part of the admin transfer. I'm sorry, did I say, did I say stormwater? I meant stormwater if I didn't say it. Um. Um, let's see what else. And then just a reduction in preventing the maintenance. Unless you do, why the increase, the sewer rate fee of like two cents versus, sorry, stormwater fee of like two cents. We did do a reduction last year in ninety cents. In the stormwater fund and that was to help offset solid waste increase. That was done in the last year, not the one that was done just a couple months ago.
The current rate that we're charging in stormwater. Is sufficient for five-year plans.
Uh. Great question. Depends on, depends on, I need to, um, evaluate a little bit more about what's going on with community fund. And those expenses there.
Question about stormwater, when we're talking about. Let it. So we know seventeen hundred, we're kind of. We have some, you know, responsibility for it because it is a stormwater asset, so these. Um, estimates that you're getting like the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, to repair, that is coming from. What fund? Stormwater? Is that, that where we're gonna take it from?
With hopefully some compensation back from FEMA.
From FEMA, okay, so. I mean, I think our stormwater fund is, is pretty nicely.
It's pretty healthy.
No, it's like healthy, that was. But we have a healthy funded stormwater, so we feel like we're pretty good as far as. Who knows what.
This is what makes me a little bit nervous. Yeah, I don't know that we've gotten, if we've gotten those, um. Engineering estimates back, John. I don't think that we've gotten any of that back, so I think that we're still trying to figure out what.
But we were to say invest in those tiger dams or something that we wanted to, you know, mitigate some damage, would that be a stormwater expenditure? Kind of saying, it would be. So, okay, I'm just. I, I'm still just looking at a lot of water and having it through the flood of eighty-three, I'm a little bit like.
I don't know if, if all that would come in before we adopt the budget.
Okay.
Uh, it, it would come back from the minimum, if. All right, gotcha.
But we do have a pretty healthy fund there. Really, there, if you look at this, there's four items that are substantially increasing there. Budgets have about ten percent. Uh, if you look at the motor pool. They work from a budget of twenty-two this year, fifty thousand. Uh, computer, and I think it's wise, we've got to make sure that, uh, we're protecting ourselves from as, as much cyber attack as we can. It's expensive, preventative is there. Uh, and you look at preventative maintenance of fifteen to fifty-six and some of these may be reclassifications. But before I, yeah, you reminded me of something. This morning I did sign an emergency declaration on behalf of the city declaring issues flooding. Obviously, the council will only have to approve that, but I did sign that. I believe the county this morning also declared. Uh, some emergency declarations. Uh, those things open the door for potential help, as John mentioned, from FEMA, the county, the state, those type of things, but that was signed this morning, so just so you're aware.
Thank you.
Because if I didn't remember to tell you that, I'd have forgotten.
It's always nice to have a reminder about something.
What, question on the estimate for the, for seventeen hundred? That number that's estimated and we might get FEMA, is that including, is that just all of the damage alone? Or is that including trying to get culverts replaced and in a better place?
It, it's just damage.
Just damage alone, it's like the sinking curve and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
We do, we do have a good balance here that we have room to take care of things.
And, and it would be. Considering the reasonable fund that's in there, it would be, I guess, reasonable to say that eventually, once we're past all the flooding. That the culverts could be replaced through this fund. Is that accurate?
That's a decision the council have to make. Uh, I think. The council's gonna have to look at a wider spectrum of things because there's actual flooding going on in the city other than seventeen hundred. So the council's gonna have to make the decision. I, I think we recognize there's things that need to be done. But the council's gonna have to prioritize those and decide. Because there's, there's a lot of areas in the city that, and I was out with Casey this morning, I didn't. Councilman severing up at Rice Creek, but, uh, there is water flowing in this city that I imagine most citizens don't even know. That it's flowing there. I mean, it's. So I think, uh, an answer to that council moved out past, the council needs to look at a. A wide thing of what they want to do to maximize stormwater flow in the city and then determine what the priorities are. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I just keep thinking that. Dave's map, it's like, well, we've got seventeen hundred and then one, two. You know, how many areas were there? Seven?
Seven.
So, yeah, that's, this is what.
If you haven't been up to Rice Creek, it's really interesting because. I mean, there's this map, the cover's off of it, the water's just. I think that's the first time we've seen that. And the whole time I've worked here, Jason, anybody that we have on staff, we remember seeing. And it's, it's interesting because if that were to overflow, I mean, there's houses right below that, that water is just. Pouring, so, uh, you know, public works is watching these graves really close, citizens are watching it really close. There's, there's a lot of water and it's just starting. So that, you know, that's a council. Yeah, so I think when this is settled down. Um, and I appreciate the public works looking at this in a. In a wider spectrum to make sure we're minimizing, we can't prevent, but I think we can minimize. I would be surprised at some point in time with water coming out the north there that we're creating. Dam-bagging rivers to take that somewhere. There's a lot of water up there. Want to talk about Dr. Lees's water? Not because of yours, because he was giving me that under that blind eye to that. I have never seen the kind of streams coming down the power line. Ever. And they're just, it's just pouring down the power line route, so. That's county responsibility, but obviously it's coming and eventually working its way down the. So I mean, what can we do with that, for example? Right now, we're just watching them right now. I mean, half of those. Right now, we're just watching them right now. I mean, half of those, what you're talking about are going an extra thirty yards and they're going right into the ground. And so, I mean, we're just watching which ones are where they're gonna pop up or, or what we need to mitigate.
I'll check it, I'll check.
Sorry, I'm not giving you a better.
I'll check, yeah, I'll check you on every morning of the day. But I've never seen the kind of streams coming down on, from the avalanche site. Oh, anyway, I think that's.
That's a good question, and I think the council's gonna have to kind of look at what the whole.
It's, it's easy to just think seventeen.
Well, they got.
Stress on our mind, but yeah, we do have a whole city.
And, yeah, but I think that's what the council's gonna have to do is how do we try to mitigate as much as we can effects on our city, so. So hopefully we have a good, good balance here. And if we sell the property down here, which we have an offer on, that will really enhance this fund, right, John?
Yep. When we sell it.
Yeah, we have an offer on the senior one, but that, all that money will go from here with some being extended for the Patriot One Park, so we do have some positive here. Can, can, take us to solid waste, if you think.
Um, the main increase there, uh, again, utility costs. Um, and then waste hauling, we do have a four percent increase in the waste hauling from last year to this year plugged in. Um, I don't see any increases in the transfer station because as we've monitored it, we, we mentioned for a couple of months ago when we increased the solid waste that our tonnage was about seven hundred and seventy per month. Seven hundred and seventy tons per month, and it actually dropped, like, like, it's, it's weird, like, it's stuck in the last four months.
The only thing.
Yeah.
People going back.
Exactly, it's, I, we've gone back to pre-COVID levels probably where people aren't buying everything disposable and throwing it away.
Yeah, so right now, our average right now is seven hundred. And so I didn't feel the need to increase that, the amount from four fifty from last year, and then so the rate that was done for the ninety cents just a couple of months ago, um, I think is insufficient. Here, I think that's really all that I have, unless you want to dive into capital projects.
And they, we read that when we're spying, I don't think there is. Is it ten percent or just a little bit?
Uh, no, the only correction that I have, um, is on Long Beach Park, I put on, I, we put in there it was five hundred thousand. The original budget said five forty, and we were like, oh, that was too much, we dropped it to five hundred and then realized it was actually five fifty. Right?
And that includes.
So.
A lot offset with the grant.
With the grant, yes. Yeah, so that's a Long Beach Park, the playground, the pickleball courts and all kinds of that, so.
That's actually five fifty.
Five fifty, yeah, so that was the five forty-seven, but no round. And so capital projects fund, I mean, we have just about everything.
I don't want to take the name tag of Dr. Doom away from, uh, from John down there. But in this budget is something that I think we can't forget. At some point in time, if it's not rectified, it starts coming out of general fund. I believe in here, most of its change, Jamie, there's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars taken out of the RDA fund to break even your quality center.
Yes.
Not that we'll use all that, I think they came pretty closely with the thirty thousand last year, thirty-five thousand. But just so you know, that that is in here. And that's, that time's kind of running out on that. So I know that, uh, Justin and the team are working on some things to try and increase revenues, but just so you're aware of the fact that, that's, that's in the, the transfer from the RDA. Basically, the general fund.
Oh, gotcha.
Sure.
I'm hoping something didn't get lost in the translation, so hit me if it did.
Well, I can fade it, just so you know, like.
Next week, we're going to discuss setting a date in the fall to talk about the RDA and the programming of the funds that we anticipate it will have at the end of the year when the RDA ends. So think about your travel plans and personal plans so that we set a date that everybody can be here. Be prepared next week to set that date, got it, right?
Yeah.
Scott Howes, our study on the south city, uh, triage right now because at all time to both of the Los Angeles Regional Council studies, I'd love to consultants know that just David. They're ready, they're ready to kick off, and it's just more a matter of. Because at some point in time, council, you can look at that as an eventual use of those funds. The only thing we have to get that kicked off. I know you're busy, yep. You know how to find your time to start, so we just. No. But the, the other thing we've asked, uh, Justin for, just so you keep it in the back of your mind is, uh, early on, the city council, many, many, many years ago, uh, was counting on using those RDA funds to renovate the, the pool. We've asked Justin, the, let us know what we're facing there, so that we make sure we address that issue.
Do we, uh, when do we want to have the discussion on the water fund rate?
We want to have that discussion, councilman Swanson, finance days, I would like to have that.
How long do we?
Probably before next week.
Yeah. About at eight nineteen on May second.
Jamie, do you have that?
John, do you have access to?
To kind of show that.
I just don't know that.
Are we, are we at a point where we can discuss it, Jamie?
We can, we can look at it.
Use this.
Oh, that's on the budget, yeah, it's not part of the budget, it'll say capital project. Um. You want to go under the admin guy that might be there? Under the twenty-three, twenty-four budget worksheets? I know it's there, but I made some changes to it. I don't want to see the over doors.
This one?
Yes, that is good.
Did you have a question, councilman Swanson? Yeah, so, uh, on the RDA.
Yeah.
We have to have that all. The money penciled out by.
Yes. And then we have three, four years, something like that, to spend it, to actually expend those funds.
Okay. But, yeah, we've been talking about it for at least a while, right?
We have, for at least three or four years, we've been talking about that this date was coming, and now it's almost here, it's almost here.
So technically, the RDA, we have to have an earmark and then it ends?
Yeah, the collection, the, the other taxing entities that have been giving us a portion of their incremental tax will no longer give us that incremental portion into the RDA fund unless we renegotiate and they agree to continue to give us a portion of the portion that they've been giving us. Which is also part of the discussion that we'll be having in the fall.
I want to update that one, thank you, million dollar number, about eight hundred thousand. So this is the five-year plan that was, I say six, because it includes twenty twenty-four. Um, that we keep throwing around, that, that we've done. Um, the colors do mean something. I probably have to go to the bottom to kind of remember what they are. Oh, no, I didn't make myself note. Did I do comments? I did. I'll click on that first, you're gonna.
Cash.
Oh, great. Oh, yeah, so that's cash, and I think green is impact fee money.
Uh, it doesn't say, this one says share with impact fee.
Blue is impact fee money. So that, that's what the colors mean, and then green, I gotta have a note somewhere, it's probably.
Uh, one hundred I F.
Other impact fee money. Yes. We color coded it, okay, so anyway, so this is the list of projects that we have based on what Jason and David have come up with. Um, and then the order of important.
Okay.
Right, so we have almost everything that's up there is, is on here, is on the schedule. Um, as part of this, this seven point nine million, so if you scroll down at the bottom, you can see here, this, this, these were our efforts that the mayor was talking about, and then about a year, let's call them G, where it's eighty thousand and.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. So we're not doing very well there, we do okay in twenty-eight, but then in twenty-nine, it's just not there. And I think by changing that one point three million to eight hundred thousand, it's probably helped that number a little bit.
Yeah, because you had that one point.
Yeah, I had it at one point three, and so, and so by year twenty twenty-nine, when I'm a whole pretty heavy. And that's just based on like what we're anticipating right now and right, and that's what comes up, covering operation costs, those kind of things.
So in our discussion, Jamie, the, the two dollars and sixty cents that were discussed, that we've talked about base rate and increase.
So this does include a two-dollar increase every single year to help cover this, but even the two-dollar increase, and this is aside from increasing the operational cost, this is just the cost to cover a project. To increase two dollars every single year, still, that one gets there.
Much easier to increase it to give us.
That's my question.
What's that number?
Three, four.
Right, I had a solid depreciation number, because I don't, uh, that seven ninety is based on eighty-twenty rules. Where we spend eighty and save twenty.
So we're even saving twenty for sure.
I'm sure.
Historically, we've been spending a hundred, a hundred and ten.
That's not sustainable.
How did we get so, we're talking about, we're talking about the water fund.
We're talking about.
How did we get to the button where we had two point nine and then ended up being so deficit by the time we get twenty, twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
Just the projects that we're doing and like the mayor is saying, that we're not saving or increasing our rates like we should to keep up with.
And, and some of it's inflation, so we used to be able to do a thousand feet of pipe, and we can do six hundred feet of pipe for the same price now. So the pipe, the plastic cost is, has really crushed us.
And that's just from two thousand nineteen, like, what John's example was, was exactly that. We used to be doing, be able to do a thousand feet of pipe. In two thousand nineteen, we are now doing six hundred feet for that exact same price during that, but here's where we're. So we really do have to know how much we have to increase. So this doesn't, there's not going to replace that in there, but this is growth projects, basically, they have with the growth of the city.
Right.
So this is like they say, hey, as our appreciation, this is incremental projects that need to be done to prepare for infrastructure growth, so that's all to part of that.
More impact fee discussion that we have to look at, or is this? So when we, so that's what we're identifying up there with color coding is, is trying to trying to decide what was impact fee, and this is above impact fee.
So like this, this yellow area, for example, this upgrade, that's, those are state standard is eight inches so that you can get firefly. So even though four inches will run culinary water to, so we can all shower, shave, whatever. Um, you need eight inches for firefly because those pesky fire folks want to be able to put out fires.
Can I make my comment here?
Yes.
Culinary water was made for firefighting, not for beaching.
And so there are a lot that, that are impact fee eligible, and, and there'll be a new, a new impact fee studying coming to you this year that will modify what we're currently charging. Uh, we don't have the final number, so we can't say it's going up or down, but I would anticipate based on inflation of projects, it's going up.
I, I believe, I just realized what you were talking about. The meter change out. Or not including on this, and that was the four million that you were thinking of. I just, when I saw that note up there for meter change out. So.
This doesn't include meter change.
It does not include our meter change out. Which.
In about the next.
In about twenty thirty, and when we did it ten years ago, well, it'd be ten years ago, but ten, twelve years ago, it was almost four million. And that was just the radios, not.
So we rejected the meters that were already there. Now, the second time, we can't do that. Because now those meters are going to be. So you're, you're have to go forward, but.
You really have two options.
Just ignore it in hopes it goes away or somebody else deals with it. We do. I get you, obviously, that's.
It's coming.
So what do we have to do to the rate?
So what rate are we? Well, if we started today on top of this.
Okay, so let's, let's make sure all the expenses are in. I mean, if we're gonna have to replace meters, that needs to be in there too. So in which case, I know it's kind of scary to put there, but it's like, okay, now we're looking at four, five, six dollar increases, in which case, it's like, let's know what it is, right, you know, really.
You're saying every year?
Uh, we will probably, probably for the next one, two, three, four, five, depending on when we start cleaning to replace meters.
Dave, with all the emphasis in state of water, do you assess that there might be grants available that can help us in these things? Because there is an emphasis.
Depends on how quickly you want to.
It's a very good question. That's one we don't know.
Yeah, I've been setting aside money for coal, for secondary water meters, that will they set aside money for?
Wasn't there something built, the anti-inflation bill that would sign that those for water structure? Things of that, make sure, I mean. So I, I guess what I'm saying is I don't want to overreact, but I don't want to, so somewhere there's more information, as Jamie said, needs to be, but I think doing nothing is probably not just the responsible.
So what is the base rate now? For water?
Seventeen?
So seventeen or nineteen sixty was a two dollars and sixty cent rate. We added another three dollars on to that. We'd be at twenty-two and change, twenty-two sixty. And the next year would be twenty-seven sixty. That would be a thirty-two sixty. Yeah, that would be a thirty-seven sixty. The year after that, it would be a forty-two sixty. In order to fund the things coming in the next five years.
Councilmember Swanson, is there, you know, under this situation, I, I understand it's kind of spreading to, to users, but we, we feel like, uh, high water users are really paying the pressure. You know, I know a lot of cities have adjusted that the tiers. Basically, you know, I'm kind of one that's.
It's a. Tier rate.
How do you use that thing versus? But it's a combination, you have to.
You know.
I think there probably is.
What percentage? What's the definition of a high water?
Twenty thousand, usually it's about twenty thousand gallons.
Our highest tier is about. So here we're trying to, uh, conserve water, right, just because we've had a good winter. So here we're trying to conserve water, right? Just because we've had a good winter. We're trying to conserve water. So is twenty thousand, do we need to lower that down to help people conserve or pay? Yeah, I don't know. We came up with twenty thousand. I'm just asking a question.
Some other people around us, but I know some of them have adjusted that as well. You know, where other people are very experienced.
One of the things to consider too, those, that some municipalities have experienced recently. And that is that. They have encouraged conservation. And so people have conserved. And now the revenue has also dropped because they're not using as much water. And they're having to raise rates because they've lost revenue through conservation in that baseline to keep the water system working. Doesn't change.
I think something like, as I read, they took an eighteen percent. I sent that to you. They did an eighteen percent increase. For several things, one of those was you mentioned.
Right. Using less water means less revenue. To manage the same infrastructure. And that cost doesn't go down, so they've had to raise rates. We got it this year. So I don't think we're gonna get an answer tonight.
Probably not.
But it's, you know, as, as we think about. This five-year plan. You know, if we did. You know, if we and future councils maintain it, because it's something that we, it would have to be passed each year. Right? By councils and this year is an election year, so who knows in, in January? Who will be sitting up there making those decisions next year and the year after that? But if, let's just say if, you know, the worst case scenario, there is that four to five dollar bump. Every year for the next five years. To cover this stuff into twenty thirty, you know, we're taking a base rate from seventeen to forty plus dollars a month. Plus, plus usage on top of that.
I think we as a council the last couple of years have kind of had to deal with things kicked down the. The canyon kicked down. I would prefer the councils in the future not have to do that. So for me, I would be.
Agreed.
I would be.
Does not be.
Sure we have all the information as we decide to make a decision on. Because we'll need to make this decision between now and when we pass the final budget in June. Right? So we have. About five weeks. That we have to figure this out. What are we going to do? What's the plan moving down the road? How much are we going to increase it now and next year and the year after? Maybe create some kind of a, a schedule? That we're saying this is what we plan on doing and, and then we can map out what kind of revenues that would give us. We can talk about the rates. Talk about lowering the threshold for being a high water user. Look at the rates, you know, the, the tearing rates, all of those things. And then, and see where that puts us.
I suspect, oh, I was just gonna say, I suspect that we haven't caught up with some of the communities around us, because I remember. When I moved from Ogden to North Ogden, five, six years ago. I, I remembered a noticeable difference, uh, difference in my rates. It was a lot less than Ogden City. And I thought, oh, that's kind of nice, but it was kind of nice because we probably weren't keeping up.
My wire bill was about twenty-dollar tariff.
So that's perfect.
Okay. Anything else? Council, we have Jamie and John. Our finance group, Mr. Swanson here.
We, we could go on for hours, but my brain started.
No, I. I just want to take this seriously. You kind of joke a little bit. I think you have to to keep your sanity. This is complex. I think people that are listening to this are finding this a little bit more complex than it looks like on the outside. Once again. Sound like, you know. But I think we have an obligation to stay ahead of the growth in the city and plan for it. That's. It's better to be proactive than reactive. So just keep that in mind. All right. And I think we'll move on to our agenda. That's okay. Time for public comments. Do you want to make some additional comments? Is that your name? North Ogden residents, please leave your comments by minutes or less.
Sandy Harper, North Ogden resident. Um, I just want to say I'm not opposed. To Cherry Day's growing and having more activities. I just don't understand why it had to just explode this year. Why couldn't it just gradually? Get bigger and. I don't understand why we didn't, why, why, and I don't think you all really cared that. They didn't explain where it was all going. When, when the presentation was made last week, it was sort of just. It wasn't real understandable. She jumped around a lot and. With our, with our budget review subcommittee. All the department heads came to us and they literally explained where every penny just about was going. And this is like, we're going to do a lot of stuff and, well, okay, here you go. I just, I, I don't understand the logic behind that. And then. When you were presented with, you know, the committee wants additional budget. There was a list of, of where the funds could come from. And I'm just surprised that nowhere on that list was there, just say no.
Can I respond to that? I think everyone here has seen a detailed budget. That maybe that hasn't been. Presented, but I think, at least I saw, that's where I knew the seventy-seven thousand and each, you know, fireworks budget, each line item has been. And I think if, just as a recollection here. They asked for the city to incur fifty thousand dollars more risk. So when you say just say no, the city said, you know, we're gonna give you nineteen thousand dollars more risk, not fifty. So they may not have gone through and said no to specific line items, but I think. When the council says no, we're not giving you fifty thousand, that was a no. And you figure out where to cut it, right? So I. I would say there, there was some no there. Was it a complete no? But they, the, the council could have said, here's fifty thousand dollars, don't worry about repaying us. But they basically said is you can have the six thousands left over from last year. Twenty-five thousand was originally budgeted and we're counting on you paying back nineteen. Now the city does have risk. You know, for additional. A lot of money between the twenty-five and the six. So it's got that additional nineteen thousand risk, but I will tell you, if they can't raise nineteen thousand dollars over their expenses. I think that's gonna be a message that the council will fully understand. So. I have seen the line item budget.
Okay, maybe that's the problem because.
Yeah, I've seen the line item actually in the contract, you know, it's got zip lines, got every. Line item there. And they did present a line item budget. Showing here's the anticipated revenues, here's the cost of this activity. So we have seen that. So I don't want anybody to go away thinking like the council just flippantly didn't look at things. It was very similar, I would say, to the budget. Many folks you have, it was just done individually in turn here. So they, they have presented. A budget in writing that everybody here, I believe, has seen. Has anybody not seen it? Can you see that? I don't think there's anything sacred, John.
Yeah, we can have it for the group tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't know who's gonna be here tomorrow. We've got some commitments.
We've got it. So it's, it's what they handed out to the council last. And so we, we can, we can give it to the citizen budget committee and.
Phil, will you be here tomorrow?
I won't.
I might be back. I've got another commitment at four. It depends on how fast the chief drives. All right, we have another citizen here that would like to make a comment.
My husband watches a lot of educational TV and we got one this week on sewer lining. And from some big city, I don't remember what city it was, but that was fascinating. To see and they were given, we were talking about how it smoothed out the pipes and everything. Anyway, I think that's great thing. I don't remember if Cherry Days, I think it's too big, too fast. And I do remember last week that she passed you guys the paper, but it wasn't part of the packet on the agenda, so we have not been able to see that. And I feel a little sorry for the department heads that have been told to keep their budgets in check. But you will find money and give it to Cherry Days over the amount that they were told they were, they could spend. And you guys just debated my next comment. We have our budget meeting tomorrow and I think either the mayor or Phil. Mr. Swanson, somebody needs to be to our budget committee meeting tomorrow and explain. Why the Cherry Days budget was raised. There's only three of us here. Tonight, which is, you know, our own fault if we're interested in budget because we live on the meeting event. I think that there will be some questions and there needs to be. Someone who can answer those questions as to why it appeared to us out of the blue that she raised this budget. And yet. She calls the twenty-third officer. We've told a no. I just find that interesting. Then I have a question totally off the wall. Um, the, it's John Hanson down there by the old city shop. They have all of those lots they're supposed to build and then the city has a contract for, for a park or something. You put a. Date deadline on that. What if he doesn't get those houses built? What happens to that date deadline for the park?
I think we've had that discussion with John. Regards to him still giving us the money.
Yeah, so. He, uh, he has to start work and record within a year of the approval. And so, but we've had that conversation. He knows that we expect the money whether he starts building tomorrow or in twelve months. But so. I don't anticipate, I anticipate us getting the money from him before that expires. I also anticipate him starting construction soon. Is that correct, Dave?
They've had a pre-construction meeting and I spoke with Geneva today. They're, they're. Like everybody, dealing with the costs of providing the services that the subdivision needs, depending on the phasing versus the. Realistic ability to sell those homes. So it's like. All or nothing, or they're trying to break their phasing, but you can't break the phasing apart without providing for the park and. Storm drainage and everything. So they're actively working on it and still building. It's just a matter of finding the right. Partner who can build the houses that will sell that. So it's kind of. Out of our control as far as the market goes on selling.
And then the other, I was gonna say is that they need us to. Ship that water into the pipe through that park. So they need that park to try to dry it.
Yeah, but I, I'm gonna say something and you're not gonna like it.
Okay.
I have missed one meeting of this group.
Yes.
I wasn't gonna say this, but I'll tell you where I'm going tomorrow. I'm going with the chief and I'm going with John. We're gonna go visit the three officers that were involved in the shooting. But I'm gonna prioritize that over this budget. Because that is much more important, the working of our officers and going through paper for two hours. So that's where I'm going. If I can make it back, I'll be here, but if not. I won't be here.
And I can appreciate that. My comment just was that there will be questions tomorrow. You, you all know who's on the committee and who questions this. And I just think it would. At some point, they're going to want.
Yes, well, there's prioritized things.
And I, and I appreciate that and I hope you wish them well for us because we fully appreciate what those officers have answered. And I do have one last question. I'm sorry, back to the park. So if, if John Hanson gives the city the money for that park, is the park. Is the city going to build the park? When they get that money, are you gonna wait for that?
We can't wait too long because we have a ramp grant. And I think we can get one year extension, but we have to, July of next year is kind of the.
Yeah, our, our deadline is till June thirtieth of the next year.
So if the park can be built before the house is.
Yep.
Okay.
Because we'll have this money.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, sorry. I know, I'm short, but that's okay. Chris Paul, North Ogden. I guess the one thing. Let's maybe just talk about Cherry Days, but I was just trying to follow the money. And just going through all of the paperwork that, you know, has been provided and I can find. I still can't find where. Because it says charities in, as an expense, but not, I don't see the twenty-five now in the budget that. Was presented today. I see it in the out years where they provide an inflow from five. But all I see. Mine is one oh six, twenty-six oh five, is fifty. That I'm seeing here. So if it's in something else, I don't have to. We don't have to muddle through it today. I can cut the game. But I just wanted to say that it's, it's really, and when you say it's complicated. I was, I've been looking through this for a couple of hours and I still can't figure it out. So.
Page eleven, Chris, is that what you're talking about?
What's that?
Is that what you're talking about on page?
Yeah. Right.
And you saw that.
Correct. Yeah, that's just the expense. To me, if you say you only fund them twenty-five.
So if you go to page.
Right, that's for the new budget. I was looking for like. You don't have.
For twenty-three? Are you talking about twenty-three?
Twenty-two, twenty-three, yeah.
So the expense is in community events?
Right, where's the revenue?
So the revenue is part of donations?
It's page two. Ten thirty-eight, one thirty-two.
Thank you, John. Donation. I just put on my.
Anyways, okay, so I just, you just changed numbers for the new budget so you could talk about.
So yes, because. Right, like the mayor talked about creating fund balance and seed money and trying to carry that forward and making sure that the money is set aside. We want to preserve that. And so this, moving it to a new budget helps to preserve that.
Okay, yeah, and, and just overall thing about the, the budget itself. Having sit through it for months and months and months, I truly am amazed and I. Appreciative of all the stuff that Jamie has to go through. But, and then one last thing is, is the. Understanding the amount of years, literally is trying to marry what Mr. Hess is doing as well. And that's the thing that I. Still trying to figure out how you guys are figuring that out because that, that's an enormous. Thing to do to try to figure out. Because like you said. Fifteen years, I think it's built down to double in size. So anyways, that's it. Thanks.
Great, Matthew. Johnny, can anybody online?
Uh, no, not right now.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments, staff, council?
I do. I just want to make sure I raise aware, so we need to adopt a term next week if it's not a public, a public hearing. Essentially, it's just the start of, right, of our proceeding officially. And then we're looking to, looking at June thirteenth for the public hearing.
Anything else?
Very, very unpopular. I'm just stating, all of you know my, my position, but I'm, as a resident. Rather uncomfortable with how much we are relying on sales tax for our budget, for any of public, say, number one. And I feel like we have not. Kept up pace with property tax increases. And, um. I, I would like a strategy to see property tax increase until we are covering much more of that budget. And that's just kind of a strategy to, to shoot for. Because I think there were many, many years that they just did not raise it at all and just kept the actual revenues static. And I just think that was. You know, great politically, but you know, I, I. And I, I would really like to, to look at raising property taxes. You know, we can choose at what rate, to choose at what level, but I think they need to go up. To me, that's, that's like salary versus bonus, right? Like the salary is kind of what we can. Count on and what we, we fund actual, what we have to do. And then the bonus is like, okay, we want, you know. Have a good, this is what we do in our personal budget, right? It's like when we.
Have a good, this is what we do in our personal budget, right? It's like when we have, you know, we have a certain amount that the budget is salary and cover that. Um, and then we have what comes in above that. And to me, that's what sales tax is, kind of like the bonus. Right? Because we don't control it. We don't set the rate. We don't set what, how much is given to us. We don't control anything about that. I would like to have a little more control over our own business, you know, and see. So anyway, I just want to put that out there. To residents, so they can put a big target on me because like, she wants to raise my taxes. I'm like, yeah, I want to raise my own taxes too.
Your tour meeting tomorrow and you'll get it.
I'm sure I will, but but do you, do you understand where I'm coming from, Brenda? Just.
Oh, I'm, I'm just coming.
But but does that make sense? That that strategy, you know, just to. Have us be a little more dependent on our own revenues and not from Big Brother to fund what we need to do to take care of our own. Off my soapbox.
Anyone else? John, you have anything?
Um, the one thing, just you might hear some concerns from developers around the city. Uh, Dylan is doing a good job at clearing up our escrow balances. Uh, getting us all caught up and we've made several of them grumpy in doing so. The nice thing is we're making all of the ones who are a little bit past time grumpy. We're not singling any out, uh, so there's that. Um, and then we will be bringing in ordinance uh, for the council to consider about turf changes to comply with the governor's new. Uh, thing about, you know, less than fifty percent. It does pretty much focus just on new homes. There's not the current program that's that's focused on existing houses. Uh, but we might also be able to wrap that into a discussion about the flip the strip program, you know, again for the summer. So. And that's something I'm gonna work on and Scott will double check what I'm doing uh, as we do it since he's overloaded on other things, but. I think I can take that on, so.
Um, John will also be bringing in the resolution to retract the uh, urgency water declaration last year. Which will now require citizens to put in the yards on a timely basis. Council can debate on how long they want to do that. I think. I'll go to a year or six months, but as you recall, we deferred people putting in their yards because of the water shortage. So John will be bringing. Uh, resolution to retract that. I think the other thing too that the council ultimately will need to look at is the transportation utility thing. What you want to do with that. Uh, that's the other thing. So we blew through our snowplow budget, right, Dave? Now we're fully blowing through our home fixing budget. Uh, I know some citizens are kind of felt like we're not moving quick enough to build those. Asphalt plants just got up and going and public works guys are a little bit busy with water right now. So uh. We are aware and there is a way they can report.
Yes.
Potholes. Uh, we have plenty, but we're not the only city that has plenty. Uh, there's, if you're driven in any city, it's a problem this year because of all the moisture. Thing, so uh, but. That's another thing that eventually needs to be addressed, our roads of uh. There's some issues with our roads. So how we deal with that is something that needs to not fall off the table really quickly. Okay, once again, great job, Jamie, John, council. Thanks for all your effort in there. So there's a lot of. What I would call behind the scenes workers didn't put in here. But there's nothing to hide, so anything that the citizens like to know transparently. Feel free to let us know. With that, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, motion to adjourn.